All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for July 26th. And we're going to start with reviewing and approving meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 7, 2016, June 22, 2016, and July 12, 2016, as written.
Sir.
Any changes? Ed is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Future meeting dates were scheduled to meet on August 9 and 23. Do those dates work for all of us?
You want to sign for me?
Well, I should bring my birthday cake on the 23rd. You're fine.
Oh, okay.
I'll sing for you tonight.
About to wish you a happy birthday that night, Tom. All right, the next item on our agenda is Citizen Speak. We have a lot of people here tonight. So, as many of you who would like to come up, please do. We would just ask that because of the number, if you keep your remarks for about three minutes, that will help us get through this and get on to some of our other agenda items. So, we have a sign-up sheet also. When you come up, if you'd just please sign in your name and address. So, we'll have that for our meeting minutes. So, would anyone like to address the board tonight at Citizen Speak? Yes, sir.
If I may.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sign first and then introduce myself.
Eat or order.
Any address?
Just a street address, if you could, yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Larry Lundergan. I reside at 23 Eileen Road. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of Citizen Speak. My issue tonight is basically concerns my neighborhood, which is the Eileen Road, Adrian Silverbrook area. Quickly, the DCR had placed no parking signs along the Hillside Street area three years ago. And with that, there was inflects of people now coming into our neighborhoods, parking indiscriminately over the weekend. And it progressed from the weekend itself into days before, days after. So, it was a couple of days here and there, anywhere from a three to a five-day weekend, if you would. That was three years ago. Two years ago, that progressed as well. And then, we were receiving trash deposits, anywhere from dirty diapers, empty bottles of water, plastic bags. Along with that, people were just parking up on the tree lawn area of the yards. And also with that, with the trash, the parking, and, like you said, even we had complaints of even blocking the hydrants in the area. So, that was two years ago. Now, the third year, we have indiscriminately parking, wrong directions on the road itself, the roads, the neighborhoods, up on the lawns, still with the trash. And now, we're discovering that even my own neighbors, as well as my own daughter, is being accosted by people who are quite irritable because now they have no place to park over in the pond. And now, we're trying to save a few spots for ourselves. If I have family members coming over or friends who want to spend some time at my house on the weekend, they can't because there's no parking. So, I would put out some calls just to kind of cordon off my area, either side of my driveway, so I can have people over. Or if my children, they leave, they come back home, there's no place to park. With that, like I said, now this year, the third year into this, we're finding out that the people that are visiting the neighborhood are becoming hostile towards the residents there. And this problem was not by our choice, and I believe it stemmed primarily from the DCR by placing these signs up and restricting a lot further parking that was allowed previously. When they did that, three years ago, there was no communication between the DCR and even our neighborhood. We're not at ... I am asking them to at least convey some type of information, but they didn't do that. This past weekend, the DCR did place a sign up there. It was more for, my personal view is more of political correctness because it has nothing to do with the neighborhood. All it says is "DCR patrons be considerate to the neighborhood." That has nothing to do with the parking issue, the trash issue, the hostility issue. The Milton Police Department, they put up two sign boards and it kind of restricted it. And this past weekend, it was almost like night and day. We had our neighborhood back. We could have family cookouts, we could have friends over, and it was a welcome sight, and it was quite a relief. And if I may touch back a little with the hostility, even if we're communicating with some of these people, like I said, their attitude, their demeanor transgressed right immediately into hostile. And even if we were, just say, you know, we're just holding a spot for a family member, like I said, now we're finding rocks are being thrown on the property, and there's just no need for that. I would like the DCR, as well as the Town of Milton, stepping in and do something with that.
Okay, thanks very much, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Would anyone else like to address the board at Citizen Speak?
Hi. My name is Carol Cannon. I live at 62 Silverbrook Road, also in this neighborhood, and I kind of just want to piggyback on what some of the concerns Larry said. In addition, as he had, we've only actually lived there for a year. And from what I understand, this Fourth of July weekend kind of just came to a climax. Some of the other things that we saw were public urination and people just getting completely naked in front of our houses. As you can see, there are two of them here. We have a ton of children in our neighborhood, and, you know, obviously, the children can't go outside, you know, during these weekends. I agree, this was night and day with these signs that the Town of Milton put up. Actually, the sign that the DCR put up, the "Respect Area Homes," is in a position where you actually can't even see it coming from either direction. And I did call them when they placed it on Thursday night, and I called them on Friday, asking them to relocate it so it could be viewed. And she said that she would, but it hasn't been moved. Again, the "No Parking Resident Only" signs made a huge difference. Thank you for all who helped put those up. One of the things that I'm concerned about, there actually were a few violators. And again, you know, there is no law that people can't park there. So, you know, one of the concerns that I have is this fishing event this weekend, or of course, Labor Day weekend, it's going to attract even more people. And one car, be it that of a resident or someone else, would be a green light for other cars to follow and just a cascade, and it goes back to how the Fourth of July was. So, again, you know, we're asking that you reach out to DCR. We had discussed in the Traffic Commission meeting them offering more parking, possibly parking on the grassy areas. One of the concerns that I had come up with since that meeting was that, especially that grassy area right by the parking lot we live across from, it would just become kind of like a tailgate. As Larry mentioned in that meeting, people were just parked on Unquity, putting their grills out, just kind of tailgating right there on Unquity. So, you know, I would be concerned about litter and noise and stuff like that if people were to park in that grassy area. And, you know, I think that bathhouse and those facilities, there's two porta-potties in the grassy area we live by, and then, of course, the bathhouse. There is no way that can accommodate the huge numbers of people that go there. So, again, you know, we're asking that you work with DCR and come up with a solution. But, that being said, whatever DCR's solution is, people know about our neighborhood now, and, you know, whether they add more parking or restrict parking or restrict numbers, people know about us and are going to want to park there. And so, I think, you know, we are asking for an enforceable, permanent parking restriction for our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Citizen Speak tonight? Yes.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Nina Nguyen. I actually live at 78 Silverbrook, so we're all neighbors here. My family's been here for about 11 years, and I think the last three years has been the worst. So, starting the summer, we actually have to start locking our doors, and even at night, we have to start locking our windows, and that has never happened before. I mean, during the week, we were able to leave our doors open, our windows open, without worrying that at night, you know, the people from the park, they don't actually leave when it's dusk. I mean, they're still there at night. I mean, I'm a single parent, two kids, and we got a knock on the door at like 10:30 PM from one of the, you know, pond people, and they're like, "Oh, our car died. Can you jump our car?" And it's like, "Park right in front." I mean, I want to be a good citizen and help, and I'm in a dilemma where if I leave my house with my two kids, you know, it's an endanger to my family. I mean, I end up giving them my battery charger and say, "Okay, when you're done, just put it on my step." But, that's not how, you know, we want to live, and that's been frequent, you know, with a lot of night, you know, like there's a lot of pond people who are still there at night. The cars are still there at night, and they shouldn't be. I mean, not at 10, not at 9, not at 11 PM. So, it's unsafe at night, and it's unsafe during the day because the speed that they're going down at that loop from Irene to Adrian is so fast. My kids aren't even allowed, they're six and, I'm sorry, eight and nine, they're not even allowed to play in front of the yard anymore because, you know, we don't know whether or not there's a car that's just flying down trying to look for parking, or they're going at a speed that they shouldn't be going. So, that's, you know, a huge issue where now our kids can't play in the front yard, you know, where, you know, unfortunately, when you live where we are, they don't understand the concept of sidewalk and street anymore. And now, we have to teach them, you can't even step off your sidewalk without being unsafe, you know, on the weekends. And the trash, honestly, the trash is a huge issue. Not only empty bottle, we're talking about beer cans, we're talking about bags, clothes, shoes. I mean, there's just like things everywhere, and we're constantly spending Mondays cleaning up after the pond attendance, and, you know, we shouldn't have to. You know, we want to go back to where we were before, why we moved into the neighborhood, why we're living here, so that there's a better quality of life for our children. So, if there's any way you can address it, make it so that, you know, there's this restriction where there's a permanent sign that goes up saying "Resident Parking Only," you know, during the summer months, that maybe that would be helpful, so that is a deterrent for the pond attendance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, one other hand. Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else after this woman comes up who would like to speak tonight at Citizen Speak? One other, okay.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Lundergan, and I live at 23 Eileen Road. And the location of my house is, I have a farmer's porch. So, Eileen comes in, Silverbrook, so I get a bird's eye view both ways. And being, you know, sitting on the front porch with my daughter, we've had videos. I took videos, I've taken pictures, and watching the violence. If somebody is blocking a driveway and you take a picture of the license plate because you want to be proactive about it, they really get mad at you. They, as my husband said, they did come up towards my porch to come after my 20-year-old daughter because she was taking a picture. And what we worry about, and they said before, is the retaliation. It's not sleeping well at night. We were actually hostages in our house because at that point, when she, one of the women was coming up to my house, another one was going up to the other door, and I told my daughter, I says, "Let's get in the house." And she's like, "Why?" I said, "Smith, let's get in the house." And that's where we stayed the rest of the day. And that's pretty tough because at night, again, she talks about locking the doors, what about the brick in the window? Because it's, and we're not being extreme. So, I did get videos, I did take pictures to show people, you know, so if they wanted to see, they saw it. It's videotaped, you can hear them yelling at us. So, all of this, I spoke to at the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And there was one other resident.
Hi. My name is Ann Tutterman. I'm in 14 Eileen Road, and I just want to give you some of the experiences I've had. There was this young boy that had a thick, big stick, and he was going to smash my pole, my light pole. So, I knocked on the window quickly, and his mother saw him. She was ahead of him. Fortunately, he didn't. This past July 4th, there was someone overhanging, they were parked on a grass strip that's just a little wider than this, so they're overhanging two driveways. Took me five minutes to get out of my driveway, which is only about a car length and a half long. And then, I was facing someone who was looking at me. I couldn't, the only thing I could do was back into Blue Hill River Road, into the traffic. She wouldn't move. Finally, she moved, and I thanked her, and I went on my way. Some people were dropped off with food. They put their things, their food and whatever, into the garden to the left of my driveway, and then, they opened up their chairs and sat in my driveway. So, I went out and said something. I mean, I'm afraid of retaliation. They might come back later and do something. I don't know. She said, "Well, what am I supposed to do with it?" I said, "Put it in the walkway. This is my property. They don't get it." Let me see. I'm afraid of fires also because people are dropping cigarette butts, and especially now, I mean, it's very dry. Plus, if the fire engine has to come through, they can't. I think that's it. If you could put up a permanent sign, oh, I know, this weekend, it was so peaceful. I usually have to look out the window if I have to go somewhere, I have to keep looking out, will someone block me? Or I have to run out and try to catch them, well, someone did block me, like I said, but they were already gone, so I couldn't talk to them. So, if you could put up some permanent signage, it was, it was the neighborhood I'm used to, very peaceful. I shouldn't have to keep looking out the window to see if anyone's blocking me. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I didn't see any other hands, so last call for Citizen Speak.
I just want to say that the traffic, even just coming in and out of the area.
Could you just come up and give us your name and address?
My name's Lydia Dolph. I live at 13 Adrian Road, which is, I overlook the pond. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son and a newborn baby, and just the traffic is, people just coming in, whipping in, driving excessive speeds, turning around. I can't let my son go outside and play in that. It's just, it's uncomfortable, and it's not fair to him. And that was really my biggest concern.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you to all the residents who have come in tonight to talk with us about this. We know you've been to the Traffic Commission, you've contacted all of the board members. Town administrator has been in touch with you. Normally, we don't address Citizen Speak, but while you're here, we are going to have our police chief give the Traffic Commission report in a short while after a couple of other things on our agenda. And I know we have a proposed motion before us relating to the meeting that the Traffic Commission had. The town administrator has already been doing a lot of work with DCR on this issue, and as has the police department. So, hopefully, that will address a lot of the concerns that we've heard tonight. All right, we have, our next item, I think we're going to go out of order. We have our sheriff here, and I'm going to ask these Skies Over Milton people if they would mind waiting a few minutes while we have our sheriff, who can, can we get him in and out? So, Sheriff Bellotti.
Sheriff, how are you?
Sheriff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me tonight, and I know that you have a very busy agenda. I'll be quick. Haven't been here in several years, just a five-minute overview of the role of sheriff, how it's kind of grown throughout Norfolk County, and how we've kind of created some strong partnerships in Milton. I've been there almost 18 years. I was a state legislator before that, representing Randolph and Quincy. And the role of sheriff is basically one that obviously houses inmates in its care and custody primarily statutorily. But, over the past several decades, in terms of inmates reentering our communities, but also the partnerships we've kind of created with the police and the Fire Council on Aging, really at the invitation of folks like your police chief, your fire chief, and Marion Sullivan. And so, you know, just quickly, in terms of senior programs, we have programs which many of your citizens are aware of in Norfolk County. It's a yellow dot program, essentially a dot on a car. So, when first responders are pulling up to an accident scene or a critical incident, they understand that there's medical information, very important information, in the glove compartment. Our IOK program is really a computerized telephone reassurance program where there is a deputy sheriff stationed, and calls are made automatically every morning to seniors who want that phone call. In Milton, there were about 15 seniors signed up. Yellow dots for 43. We also have kind of a LoJack Safety Net program, which is a LoJack product, which essentially is GPS for seniors, unfortunately, who have, you know, early dementia or Down Syndrome, young folks, or autism. About two of those in the Town of Milton. We have a youth camp also in the Town of Braintree. Unfortunately, some of the Milton young folks, 10- to 14-year-olds, find their way to it. It's not, they're not the biggest group at graduation every Friday, which is about 155 kids a week. But, we do, you know, it's every early April throughout the county. If you want to, you can go on my website, and you can sign up, and the camp is usually full within literally eight minutes, about 1,500 kids. So, we, that is an academy. It's not like a typical recreational program. It's a rope course, and we tie some very strong curriculum around decision-making and leadership, and learning how to say no to kind of negative kind of influences as they enter middle school and high school. And also, I think as a kind of a third stool in this chair, is a third leg, is we have a very strong relationship with your police chief, with Chief Grant. We just began a program called Safety Information Program. It's essentially a, I guess, a carrying case that most of the engines and ladders will have on, with a lot of information that might be helpful to seniors in terms of these programs and others in town. And in terms of your chief, or no, several years, your police chief, who are very happy to see, has followed Chief Rose in terms of professionalism, seeing the sharp source of resource. We have grown leaps and bounds in terms of what I would call complimentary work. We know that we're jailers. We have 220 folks who are in uniform. Half of them are deputy sheriffs, so they do police work outside of the four walls. But, it's only with the invitation. Chief Rose is the leader, and I know the new chief is going to be somebody just based, you know, based on my kind of sense of who Chief King is and what he's done with that department over the years, that he understands, we know our role. It's a support role in the community, whether it's with Metrolec, which is a regional policing group that you folks are very aware of because you guys were leaders in it. We have K9s that can help or back up, coming around out of Denham or the area. So, intelligence gathering with an investigative unit, National Night Out. So, I just want to, you know, congratulate the new chief and say that how excited I am to continue this relationship. So, finally, and I know time is of the essence here, I think our greatest issue right now is reentering offenders back into our communities. Unfortunately, we are community-based. Offenders are coming out of, you know, our district courts, Quincy and otherwise, Denham, Brookline, and the others, and they're serving no longer than two and a half years. And we understand by national studies, as we are know in a dotty also, that the opioid crisis has really created a situation where easily up to 80% of our offenders have some type of substance use issue, or in a great percentage of that percentage have a dual diagnosis with mental health issue. So, we have become the defacto detox center in Norfolk County. What we've tried to do over the past several years is create strong partnership with stakeholders in those areas that have been proven by national and other authoritative kind of research studies, housing, mental health, recovery homes, vocational adult-based education programs, substance use programs. We have more partners in the Quincy-Milton and throughout Norfolk County areas who are now coming into the jail, working with these offenders, you know, on their last 30, 60, 90 days, and they're stepping down sometimes even into a recovery home bed that is being paid for by the sheriff's office. So, we have a big emphasis on reentry in understanding that most of these folks are here, are there primarily, not the only reason, but primarily because of some type of substance issue. So, in closing, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you today and continue the strong relationship.
Sheriff, I just want to thank you for taking time out of your schedule to come out here to Milton. You know, you've been a strong leader and an advocate throughout Norfolk County and a great partner of ours. And to come and articulate some of the programs for seniors and for children is, it's really encouragable. I think that I've heard about, I have young kids, and I've heard about that program, and it really is tough to get into, and it's quite a program. But also for the seniors and to make note of what you're doing for our town and the partnerships that you have with our police department, and all the things that you're doing with people who are getting back into the community and coming out of jail is really important. I think that, you know, you should be acknowledged yourself as for doing a kind of job.
I appreciate that. I have a comfort level. I grew up on the Quincy-Milton line. I went to B.C. I had a lot of Milton kids, like Jim McCullough behind me, classic '81.
I saw him.
I know. You were 92.
92, yeah.
92, a little bit younger than me. You're a little bit younger than Jim. So, I've, you know, even from a young age, I have a great deal of respect to how you folks, how you guys run things in Milton, and your expectations on each other of being appointed officials and the folks you partner with. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go back to the next item, the fifth item on our agenda, which is a conference with Katie Pearl and the Skies Over Milton Group. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you.
Do you have anyone with you tonight?
No.
Okay. If you did, I was going to invite them up to the table.
Oh, thanks.
Perhaps we should introduce ourselves. You've had a lot of communication with the town administrator. I'm Katie Conlon.
And I'm David Burns. We've all spoken on the phone.
Yep, Tom Hurley.
So nice to meet you all in person.
Nice meeting you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
So, I want to start by officially changing the name that this project is known by because of all the confusion it's caused to be called Skies Over Milton. It has nothing to do with aircrafts like that at all. So, the name that we're using right now, there's two names on the table. I would love to get your feedback, actually. One is Milton Reflected, and the other is I Milton slash Our Milton. So, we'll just lay that out there for now. So, as you may know, four years ago, my theater company began traveling to five towns named Milton across the United States. When we are there, we talk to people about their lives and worldviews and hear about their experiences in the towns. And what we bring in exchange is a play that we make reflecting in our experiences there. But, our hope is that when we bring this play to each Milton, it becomes part of an ongoing conversation that the town is interested in having and has been having for a period of months, so the play can be contextualized by that and can feel part of an ongoing effort. So, in Milton, Massachusetts, I've been lucky enough to start working with an incredible cohort of people, you guys included. And so, I wanted to come tonight to give you a significant update about the project, talk about the scope of the year. And I actually have some questions that I'm not sure if this is the correct venue for us to have that conversation, but you can let me know. So, I'm going to pass around a list of, I think this can go out to all of you, and thanks, Amber, for helping me.
That's okay.
I'll keep one. So, I wanted to start by thanking you guys as the selectmen for your significant support, which has included writing a letter to the National Endowment for the Arts in support of a grant that we applied for and have received. And it stated that you, as the governing body of the town, intended to come onboard with us as kind of a civic umbrella to support the efforts and publicly declaring Milton Reflected as the town theme for the year, which is so exciting because there are so many diverse groups who are interested in being involved in this. It will really help network those efforts and help people feel part of this larger thing. So, that's awesome, and I think it went a really long way in, whenever I say that, it goes a really long way in making people feel, oh, this is something that our, the leadership of our town really believes in. And how we're defining that project is that Milton Reflected is a year of creative programs and civic dialogue designed to bring Miltonians together to talk about what it means and reflect on what it means to be a responsible member of a diverse community. So, those creative programs and conversations might look a lot of different ways, and the specificity of the topics or the facilitation of those dialogues might change depending on the groups or the contexts. So, some of the updates are, I've been having really good talks with Mary Gormley at the schools about, and talking to some of the faculty at Pierce and at Milton High about ways that this project can bolster curriculum specifically in the civics classes and the creative writing and theater classes. One of the diversities that the people I've been working with are interested in is the youth versus elder communities. And so, we're working with Fuller Village, Unquity House, and Winter Valley on bringing in playwrights from Boston University to do writing workshops with them, and bringing those same playwrights into the high school and maybe also the middle school to do writing workshops with those people around a shared theme that has to do with their own experience of being a Miltonian. And then, in, on a Saturday in May, we're going to have an intergenerational play festival hosted at Fuller Village where plays that the elders write can be shown alongside plays with youth, and they'll be acted and directed by professionals. with youth and they'll be acted and directed by professional theater artists from Boston who will come in for the day to perform that. So, that's something that's really exciting. And it's like a homegrown theater event to partner with a professional theater event that we'll be bringing in, hopefully also in June. As you guys know, the only performance spaces that are outfitted with theater infrastructure in town are at the middle school and high school. And May and June are a really busy time on those stages. So, we're trying to figure out if that is the best time to bring the show. And if so, how can the students still have really great access to it? So, that's where we are with that. I started working with Dennis Slaughter, who's the choir director at, what church is that? It's Marian Easterlings Church.
Parkway Methodist.
Yes. And he is going to create a theme song for the project that will be, our goal is that it can be learned kind of on-site. So, it's sort of a call and response based thing. So, choirs can learn it and sing it, but also groups can learn it on the spot and that it can show up in different community, townwide events, like at Celebrate Milton, at the library, during our shows, on MLK Day in different places. So, it can kind of mark the project in that way. With Jeff Stone and Citizens for Diverse Milton and Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, we're putting together a series of five dialogues that will span the twelve-month period. And they're said to happen at, Celebrate Milton will be the first one. My company will be in residence at the library in their gallery space for the month of November, creating a kind of listening gallery of voices from people in the Milton's all over the country. So, we'll do a dialogue in that space as well. MLK Day in May will also be in residence at the library, so we'll have another dialogue then, and then a final dialogue at the conclusion of the Milton Reflected year. So, that's getting going. And we're trying to, one of the things we're working with are how to best invite people to those dialogues so people are actually there. And to build on the work with the elder residencies, we're hoping that a civics, civics classes can, as a field trip, go to an elder residency and have a facilitated civic dialogue with youth and elders at the same, same time. And then Citizens for Diverse Milton is really hopeful that they can sponsor a new concert on the green next summer that's specifically a multicultural music festival to kind of bring a new flavor into that traditional summer event. So, those are, that's sort of the scope of what's, what's happening. And it's really, the library continues to be an incredible support and so I just wanted to share that great news with you. And what I've passed out is what we see happening month to month, so you can kind of see how the scope of the year might look. So, that's my update. And some questions that I have have to do with the kind of how of this proclamation. I know that there's not going to be a town meeting, a big town meeting in the fall, which is when I thought this, we could launch. And I'm thinking that maybe Celebrate Milton might be a better time for that. But I'm wondering, we're going to create a logo and a look and a brand for this. And I have questions about how much you all want to be involved in vetting that or participating creatively in that. Is it possible to make a sort of banner that can go somewhere? So, those are the kinds of questions I wanted to talk about. Is this the right time to talk about that?
I guess we can.
We may have to follow up on some of it and get back to you, but I would be interested in participating in it.
Yeah, sure.
I would as well. And I think a banner would be, you know.
I mean, the events sound wonderful. They really do.
I think it's going to be great. You know, so our Milton's, the first Milton we worked in had a population of only three hundred people. And that was in North Carolina. And in a town of three hundred people, you can reach everybody. And then last year, we just finished Milton-Freewater, Oregon, which is a town of, it's fifty percent Latino, fifty percent Anglo. So, the play, we adapted the play to be bilingual. But in, and that was a town of seven thousand people. And even at that size, we felt, wow, the impact really diffuses, you know, like you can't reach everybody. And you guys, in the scale of our Milton's, are a huge town, twenty-seven thousand people. And so, so we know that we're not going to touch everybody, but things like a banner, things like the town website can go a far way in helping people feel like there's something going on that they can be a part of. And, oh, maybe my child is in that class and, or, oh, I go to MLK Day or.
We could tie it into some, some of our social media, Twitter and, but I think there's a lot of opportunity.
Now, the banner thing, were you thinking of a permanent banner for the year or just one that would go up at times or?
Well, what do you think would be better?
I don't know. But, I mean, if it were, one place where a large banner really works is where they put the Celebrate Milton banner.
Pierce School.
No, it's, it's further down. They usually run it right across Edge Hill and, and Randolph.
Oh, up in St. Elizabeth's. Right in the intersection.
Yeah, it's, it's along the wires up there.
Yes, I know what you mean.
They won't do those anymore, Mr. Hurley. We don't do the banners across anymore.
Why not?
The utility companies don't like the wires, pulls down on the wires. So, we've stopped those a couple of years ago.
There's a location where they put a banner in front of Pierce School, but I know that they need to use that, they use that for Celebrate Milton, I think, as well.
Yes, also the library as well.
The library as well. So, you could have a couple of locations.
Even out here in front of Town Hall.
Yeah.
And is that something that you think could stay up for the course of the year?
In certain places.
I don't know. Yeah, depending on the location, the library may have other, you know, you'll find as you're working with our town, we've got a lot of separately elected boards.
Right.
So, we don't really have any direct control over the library. We can ask, but there's a separate board that we'd have to talk with about that. Depends on your location.
And if there were other events that occurred, it may have to come down while another event went up, but then it could go back up again if they were amenable to it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That sounds great.
And the other thing would be too to get, you know, we do have a major college in the town that.
Curry College.
Probably Curry, that we should try and get involved if we could.
Yeah.
And we have Milton Academy as well.
And Fontbon Academy, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think that Curry College would be, what do you think is the best venue for our play to happen? About eighty people can come a night, so it's an intimate experience.
Well, there's a couple of places. If the school's too crowded, I don't know if the Who's-a-Club would be willing to, but they do have a stage.
They used to do, well, skits there at the, Milton Who's-a-Club.
It's a private club.
On Central Avenue.
Private social club.
That's a, that's a potential area as well, yeah.
Although the high, the high school might be the first option to check there.
Yeah, I'd say the high school is crowded at that time.
I'm just working with Barbara Wright to see if there's a time to do that. Do, does the whole range of Milton residents, do they all feel comfortable and welcomed at this, at the Who's-a-Club?
Oh, they would if it was an event that was marketed throughout the town.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. Great. Which name do you like better, Milton Reflected or I Milton?
I was going to suggest a poll using our social media and.
That's a good idea.
You know, let the residents decide.
Yeah.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Cool. In terms of the needs, the ongoing needs of the project, do you think the town is able to support it via things like printing, flyers, things of that nature, as in terms of like an in-kind support?
We could probably do some. I think it depends on the extent of it.
Uh-huh. So, maybe we can have a longer conversation about.
That might be something I think you should talk with the town administrator about.
Okay, great.
If he can take into account budget and what the cost may be.
Right, right.
And then the folks who are spearheading the dialogue series are curious about whether it's a good idea to bring together the Board of Selectmen, the schools, the library, Citizens for Diverse Milton, like kind of name this constituency that's interested or that is sponsoring those dialogues. Or is it enough that Milton Reflected is sponsoring those dialogues? I think what they're thinking is, as much as the kind of parent umbrella of the town can actively say this is supported, the better. But, yeah.
I think we'd be happy to co-sponsor it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. But I do like the idea of trying to get all the, all those elected bodies because we do have some diverse elected bodies that we don't get together all that often with.
Oh, that's interesting. And who, like what are the?
Well, library is a separate elected body.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cemetery is, and so there are a few parks.
Yeah, the park commissioners, the schools, yeah.
Schools and the parks and rec. Who is the best person? I have had an initial conversation with Parks and Rec about what it would take to do a concert during the summer. Who is the best person to talk to about that?
Kevin Crissom is there, is the commissioner of the parks.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Maybe I can.
He'd probably be, you know.
How far would you do the contact information, Katie?
That would be great. And do you have questions for me about what we're trying to do or how we're doing it or?
Maybe for the, for the people who are watching, who may not know much about this.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe you could tie it in with the Milton's in the other states and how they all fit together or what your overall.
Sure.
Do they relate to each other? How do they, how do they, what's your end result with all of the five that you're looking at?
Okay, nice. Thank you. So, so my theater company and as a theater artist, I've made work and we've made work almost primarily in big cities, performing for audiences who have really similar life experiences to us and are of a similar demographic. And a few years ago, we started really wanting to learn more about the country and wanting to learn more about what it really means to be an American right now. So, we thought, let's make a project that will ask us to go out into this huge country and talk to people we would never have reason to meet and go to places we would never have cause to go to and see what we can learn about them and about ourselves and about what it means to be an American. And so, that was kind of the animating question of the project. And then through going, so we thought that's a big question. So, we have to contain it in some way. Let's choose towns that have the same name as kind of a structure for that. So, we Googled most commonly named cities and Milton is in the top twenty most commonly named cities.
Interesting.
Yeah. It's possible it's because there, many of you were Mill-Towns and then the name got shortened to Milton. And so, we looked at the Milton's spread out on a map. The name excited our imaginations. I had an uncle named Milton at one time. John Milton, who wrote Paradise Lost, came into our heads. It just felt like it had theatrical possibilities. And so, we looked at all the Milton's spread out on a map and we wanted to choose based on different parts of the country, different demographics, different industry profiles, different rates of wealth, different ethnicities. And so, we chose, let's see, people are looking at me. Is this Massachusetts, this is the Massachusetts side of the country over here for people? Okay. So, here we are in Massachusetts. Our other Milton is North Carolina, population three hundred. Milton, Louisiana, which is a suburb of Lafayette, also very small, about three hundred and fifty. Milton, Wisconsin, six thousand five hundred. And then way across the country, Milton-Freewater, Oregon. And, and we have a website, which is called SkyOverMilton.com, which is where the Skies Over Milton came from, that connects all five towns. And it's kind of like a digest where you can compare the towns and see photos and there's profiles of people we've met there. So, it's a way to kind of see yourself reflected that way. When we do our show, we bring our own aesthetic to these towns that, in our understanding, there's not much, we're often considered experimental theater artists and we tend to do non-traditional work not in theaters. Our last project was in a forty-acre meadow outside Philadelphia. We've done work over on bridges across the Mississippi River. Here in these Milton's, we like to create community spaces where we bring projected video of the skies over each of the Milton's, audio of people speaking from each of the Milton's, and then three actors who are sharing what's almost like a poem or a list of experiences that we've had in the towns. And the very first line of the play is an experience that we had here. You were the first Milton we visited and we walked into John and Marita Cronin's house. They, somebody told us that we should talk to them. And so, they invited us over and they served us chocolate milk because of Thatcher Farms dairy for Marita Cronin's family. And the first line of our play is sometimes you are poured a glass of chocolate milk. And the play starts with moments of hospitality and food that have been shown to us or offered to us on all of these trips. And ultimately, the play gets to our answer of what it means to be an American that we've learned. But along the way, we bring all five Milton's into one room and offer each local audience a chance to see themselves, hear themselves reflected within the scope of the whole country. So, it's a pretty exciting project.
It sounds like an interesting project.
Thank you.
It really does.
Yeah, awesome.
I'm excited.
Cool. I look forward to staying in touch. We'll do the poll for the name.
Yep.
So, should all my communication basically go through?
DM raise, yeah.
Okay. Super. It's really great to be here with you guys.
Well, thank you for coming in, Katie.
Thank you again, Katie.
We'll put as much of this out as we can on Twitter, as David said, and our social media.
Yeah, great.
To get the word out for the town. Thank you.
It's good.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a meeting with our new police chief, John King. Chief King, welcome.
How are you?
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you all for this.
It's our first meeting with you since you've taken over the reins as, as police chief and we're.
Getting used to the title.
Not really.
Before we start, I just want to add, I happen to be at the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition meeting last week and it was, I think it was Chief King's first, probably the first speaking event you were at or public event in town as, as the chief. And it was really a wonderful meeting and we'll probably touch on opioids and substance abuse, but I know everyone who was at that meeting had very positive things to say and was, was really very receptive to your comments and very appreciative of the ideas that you have on that very important topic. So, these are challenging times for police departments around the country and you're, you're coming in at a difficult time, but you're nationwide, but you're coming in with so much experience in this department. We have such a wonderful department. As Brian Walsh, our former town moderator, who happened to be at the substance abuse meeting, mentioned again what qualified candidates we had for this position and how happy the committee was with the candidates and with, with the choice that the town administrator made. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it.
Just give you a quick overview of basically some of the stuff I'm hoping to do in the police department. I won't bore you with all the specifics, but, you know, it really comes down to dealing with what the problems in the community are. And, you know, I'm a big believer, we got to stay vigilant of the national issues, you know, the terrorism and active shooters. But the reality is, you know, Milton's a small town, thank God. It's a pretty safe town. And a lot of our issues are community policing issues, traffic issues, as many of the residents behind me are here for, you know, the opioid epidemic, that's a national and a local issue, unfortunately. You know, we're treating about five deaths in the first six months. So, that's significant. We're losing a lot of people. You know, I caution on that number because we always wait for medical examiner reports and they take quite some time. But it's a serious issue and like Sheriff Paulody mentioned earlier, mental health and substance abuse, not to repeat the speech the other night, but, you know, he said eighty percent of his population. And it's the same with what we're dealing with day in and day out, it's probably about eighty percent. It's a huge number. So, to police that, you, you can't just be law and order and, you know, deal with the courts. You have to involve the community, you have to involve other groups. And I plan on focus on that. I think it's critical. I try and do that in any stage of my career, when I was a court prosecutor, when I worked the street, whatever it was. In the first few months, I just hope to maybe restructure the department, move some personnel In the first few months, I just hope to maybe restructure the department, move some personnel around, you know, like, like everyone will always wish we had more personnel, but I believe we can make some improvements by restructuring the department. I'd like to dedicate some staff to some of these issues like traffic and community policing that I feel like we don't have dedicated staff for now. Complication is our department uses a rotating shift system. The majority of police departments do not, they use straight shifts. And it makes it difficult because when people have issues, the person working right now at 7:30 PM is a different person tomorrow. You know, they're working overnight, midnight to eight, the next day they're off. Where in a lot of departments, the person there at 7:30 tonight is there at 7:30 tomorrow, is there at 7:30 the following day. So we have to work around that. That's not something we can change without the union supporting it. So I think we can work around it by realigning some staff, modifying the structure. I won't go into all the details, I don't want, it would take quite a while, but you know, that's something I would explain to you over time and I'd like to talk to the unions about and stuff like that. But I think that will allow us to treat some of the current issues. As I mentioned, I'm big on expanding community outreach, internal groups, you know, community members, stakeholders, outside groups, you know, national lines of mental illness. I meet with them monthly in Quincy. I started that about a year ago. We work on a jail diversion project. I work with JELF. We have an advocate now at the station we got about two years ago, works full-time, had no cost to us through a Violence Against Women Act. And the key to these things and these partnerships like the Substance Abuse Coalition is, it's not just we're going to the call and then we're either arresting them or we're, you know, clearing the call and that our role is ending. We're staying involved, we're following up, we're helping them get the other resources and services they need to prevent future calls. And that's really the key of policing. It's, it's amazing how many of our calls are repeat calls, either the same individuals or the same houses. So unless we target like the problem, you know, which is the basic premise of community policing, we're just going to keep repeating ourselves. Some of the internal things, I, you know, I think we need to improve training. I think that's, you know, I don't want to say fallen by the wayside, but it's not where it should be. I have a lot of plans on different types of training, some new software I've got for better tracking of training. That's critical in this day and age, all these issues you're seeing from use of force, you know, substance abuse, just educating officers. There's a lot of aspects of training, updating internal policies. They haven't been updating the department in a significant period of time. You know, to be effective, we basically have to give our officers good guidelines and, you know, that requires those policies. You know, they have to be modern, they have to be lawful, they have to be easily accessible. And I think we can do improvements to that. They're about 10 years old, that's, that's a long time. I bought a software that will give everyone instant access, it will allow them the keyword search, so if they're dealing with a juvenile, they can type in the word juvenile and they'll get every policy we have on dealing with juveniles. So I'd like to make a lot of internal adjustments like that.
Will that software be in the cruisers or?
It won't be in the cruisers. That ability doesn't exist, but we kind of can backdoor ways, like somebody would have the ability to bring up that policy in the station and they could email it to somebody in a cruiser and stuff like that. The near term, you know, we'll be doing some promotions obviously just because of me being promoted, it creates a chain reaction, the deputy chief, lieutenant, a sergeant, down three patrol officers, we'll have to replace those. So that's really the near term. I'm willing to have you answer questions, but that's kind of some of the internal changes. Once we restructure, you know, I hope that personnel and those people dedicated to traffic and community policing can, you know, do some of the other things we've wanted to do, but we've had trouble doing, increasing, you know, foot and bicycle patrols in some of the business districts, helping out with some of the parking turnover there as well as some of the ongoing issues some of the merchants have in the community policing sense. So I, I think the restructure will help with that. And it's basically an overview. One other thing I'd like to comment on, and I welcome any questions you have, is, you know, this day and age, there's a lot of issues with the police on the news. A lot of them involve race relations, use of force. Those are top priorities and it's not something new. About two years ago, I trained an officer in our department, Walter Pyrez, in de-escalation techniques. And we found basically the best company in the country and they didn't offer it in mass. And I sent him out of state. We didn't just certify him, we certified him to instruct the other officers. And he's come back and he has certified basically and taught every other officer in our department in de-escalation techniques. And it's funny, I see that in high demand today from area police departments and, you know, I like to think we were a little bit ahead of the curve on that and Walter was just a great personality, great police officer, and he was very well received. I was worried about hesitation from some of the officers because you come out of police academy, you're taught a lot of tactical end of policing and, you know, he really taught the opposite, like, you know, communicate with people, you know, create distance, don't go right to your pepper spray or your batons or your, you know, your weapons. And that's a huge benefit. It's important, you know, dealing with people with mental illness, that people with mental illness is a huge reason for our use of force situations you see on news and on videos. It's also important for our race relations, you know, the police sometimes feel one way, community members feel another way, but I'm a big believer of engaging the community and all members of the community. And I believe, you know, modern policies, you know, re-engineering our training so that officers are using some of these de-escalation techniques rather than resort into traditional tactical type techniques can go a long way in the community. That's basically a general overview. I'm willing to have you answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for the chief?
Just want to thank you again, you know, for taking the time to come in here and articulate some of the things that you're working on now. I know you're kind of underwater getting accustomed to the new position and you can have a lot of time. So I'm not going to really expand on any questions other than the fact I want to congratulate you on some of the things that you said about the education, the training and community policing, which I think we've heard over the last, you know, year and a half as being something really big. And also any, any sort of some combat to drug, you know, kind of selling in the streets and stuff that I know that you're aware of and you guys have been very active on, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that too, chief. I think you touched on all the things that concern, I think, all of us and, you know, be interested to see it, you know, transpire over, over the year, but I mean certainly the community policing, certainly police presence in the, in the business districts and foot patrol, bike patrol, I think is hugely important, you know, just to get that interaction with, you know, especially during the summer months when the kids are around.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, chief. We also have some traffic recommendations. Why don't we move on to the traffic commission and highlight some of your requests on that? Many here in the audience are eager to hear one in particular.
Should take that one first.
I think we should go to that one first. Which is Silverbrook Road.
Okay, so I will propose a motion to approve the following recommendations to the traffic commission, the first being Silverbrook Road, to write a letter to the DCR identifying the burden on the residential neighborhood that their facility is causing and asking them to meet with town officials to help resolve the issue and install no Houghton Pond parking, police take notice signs on Eileen Road and Adrian Road at the intersection of Blue Hill River Road.
Second.
Okay, the motion made in seconded. Any discussion? Chief, is there anything you would like to add from the traffic commission meeting? Obviously, we heard quite a bit tonight from the residents while you were here. Is there anything you'd like to add from the traffic? We heard you had a marathon traffic commission meeting last week.
We did. It went about six and a half hours.
Incredible.
And nonstop, literally. We didn't, we never left our seats to eat, go to the bathroom or anything. So I appreciate the patience of the other traffic commission members and some residents waited a very long time to speak. There is a problem up there, you heard from these residents, it is accurate. You know, I've observed it, I know some of you and Anne Marie have seen up there checking on the area and I think it's a poor, and the residents know that, that literally this wasn't just a sign down the line, like the people at this table went up and checked for themselves firsthand. So they took it serious. You know, the residents had a lot of ideas from a seasonal restriction to stickers for residents to a time restriction. We worried about enforcing that, that some of the residents' guests couldn't get ticketed. But in the meantime, we've increased patrols, we put our signboards up there and, you know, I was glad to hear the residents said it's helped. I did check both Saturday and Sunday myself, so I saw that it did help. Basically, the problem's caused because the DCR, you know, eliminated parking on Hillside Street. And I saw the DCR and the state police towing all the cars a couple of weekends back and that just caused people to seek out the neighborhood even more so. It, as I said, it's been a problem for a couple of years. I think the question is just finding the right solution. The concern with a time restriction is that, you know, that also burdened the residents. But, you know, the signboards helped, you know, I believe the motion made by Mr. Burns will help and we can still work with DCR and hopefully get a long-term solution.
Now, will the police take, the no Houghton Pond parking, police take notice be enforceable?
We, we can't enforce it just by those signs, no. So we're limited, but you know, it did work this weekend, it did deter people. I believe the consensus of the residents, we told them it wasn't enforceable, but they felt it would help and deter a lot of the people, it seems to have. I realize there's a risk over time that could deteriorate, but we also did increase patrols significantly. So I think the signs, even though they're unenforceable, combined with people seeing cruisers regularly circling through, has probably made them think police were up there ticketing.
Okay.
Okay, so with the increased patrols, I mean, that's obviously going to help with, anytime there's any hostile approach by any of these people towards the neighborhoods.
Yes.
And, you know, with these signs, on top of the fact that we have the other signs educating the people from Houghton Pond to stay out of the area. So it's kind of a domino effect, but again, and as you are concerned, I'm just concerned that something does escalate.
Exactly. We have crews up there a lot. I spoke at the traffic commission, I'll speak here. I highly encourage people, if there's a problem, to call. You know, situations described as people changing, resulting basically in some, you know, indecent exposure type stuff, call the police. Or if somebody's calling, blocking the driveway or fire hydrant, that is something we can enforce, so call us.
Right.
I highly encourage anyone to do that for problems and we'll certainly respond immediately and deal with them. You know, longer term, you know, we could vote a sign that would be more enforceable, you know what I mean?
If this doesn't work, yeah.
You know, the, the key is the residents wanted to say, you know, a resident only, like a resident only permit and system. We could enforce that, but I also know in other parts of town, you know, we have never granted a resident permit.
Sure.
Type of parking situation. And at the traffic commission, I spoke of concern about opening that door.
Yeah.
Because it's a very good start.
Because town, white, that could create a lot of other demands, so.
I suppose the ultimate answer too is for DCR to create more parking, accommodate.
That would be huge, yeah. There's definitely more work with the DCR to go.
The town administrator may want to weigh in on that.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Conlon. As a result of the traffic commission meeting last week, I did reach out to the DCR that very day. I did speak with Matthew Sisk, who is the deputy commissioner, and apprised him of the situation. He did assure me that he was going to put additional ranger patrols in the area and he is the one that put the, had the message board put up there. In addition to that, I actually had a face-to-face meeting with Commissioner Leo Roy last Friday as well as Mr. Burns attended that meeting. And it was really a very good meeting. He understood, Commissioner Roy understood the problem. We talked about increasing the parking on Silver, on Blue Hill River Road into the gravel area. He didn't want to do that at this point in time because they don't have a parking attendant on duty and he felt that that would, it would be hard for the people to understand the traffic pattern if he was to do that. This is something they will look at in more detail next year, but we're coming into, you know, the middle of, to the end of the summer. They've, they pledged to do the additional ranger patrols and to do the sandwich board. And then they will, because this is such a beautiful, they're a victim of their own beautiful serene pond and people want to attend the pond and, and use the pond, but it does put additional burden on the bathhouse and...
I think it should be noted though, that, that we did have a good discussion, again, to piggyback off of, with Commissioner Roy.
Absolutely.
He was amenable to potential change in the future. But he also heard from us that it is unacceptable for his patrons to be in the neighborhoods.
Yes.
And, you know, doing things that really no neighborhood should have to deal with. So he's very aware of that and sensitive to that. And we hope now that we have great communication that Anne Marie is going to be the point person, working with Commissioner Roy, that the dialogue is now open, the communication is there and that hopefully we can get some positive resolve as we move forward, working together on this.
Right.
Okay, anything from anyone else at the table? And if not, we have a motion before us, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, I'm also going to make another motion with the amendments to the traffic rules and orders, Article Five, Section Seven B, Edge Hill Road, to remove the two-hour parking designation for the parking space on Edge Hill Road between the bus stop and the crosswalk at the intersection of Boulevard Street, originally voted at the February 4th, 2014 traffic commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this? Chief, would you like to add anything?
No, Kate, no, I'll say you may be familiar with this, we exchanged emails about it.
This is the resident who had the parking issue.
Yes, so essentially looking into that, they had designated a section of two-hour parking. At some point later on, they had put in a crosswalk and just a housekeeping measure. By doing that, there ended up being one spot that people were following a sign being allowed to park, but they were parking between a bus stop and a crosswalk, which was creating a hazard for either people getting off the bus and stepping on the traffic or people in the crosswalk stepping on the traffic. So we just want to eliminate that one spot. Originally, it was a larger section that was part of before the crosswalk.
Okay, I had a feeling that might be the, this situation. Okay, anything else? Then if not, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Next motion is Article Five, Section Ten C, Adams Street, to remove the loading zone on the northerly side of Adams Street, extending easterly 80 feet from the intersection of Franklin Street, originally voted at the September 22nd, 2015 traffic commission meeting. Note, the valet parking designation will remain in place.
I'll second that.
Second. Chief?
There would be a good bit of discussion on this. Essentially, everyone agrees the current loading zone in the East Milton Business District is not working and that seems to be the police, the residents, you know, everybody else on the traffic commission from, you know, the town plan or DPW. Everyone agrees it's not working. Residents, even the chamber, the East Milton Business owners, uniform consensus that it's not working. The problem is, there's not uniform consensus on what will work. And everybody seems to have a different idea and we contemplated spots, there was discussion of moving it from its current location on Adams Street, keeping it on the same side, but moving it up from like Abbey Park towards Mr. Chance and the bowling alley, the old bowling alley. There was a lot of talk about putting on Franklin Street on the side of Starbucks. There was pretty good consensus on that location for being a good location for the loading zone itself, but there was some disagreement as to, we're putting the trucks into the side street and now exiting and going down Franklin, you know, assuming and hoping they would take a left on Bassett. Some of those trucks are 18-wheelers, that's a very congested area with the entrance to the Milton Marketplace, Bruges and the gym, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there. There was concern about it making the turn from Franklin. We talked about testing that, using DPW trucks and trailers, but there was also concern that the trucks, when they do that, they're going to loop down the neighborhood, maybe, you know, take a right and go out Church Street. So, you know, that was a viable spot, but there was great concern about it, the vehicles actually leaving after loading and unloading, I should say. We talked about the other side of the street, but basically after great discussion, a motion was made to put it on Granite Ave on the three spots north of Adams Street. So eventually kind of start in just by the alleyway there, Adams Court. The theory on that was that it basically kept the trucks on the main road, they would never go inside streets, that's a huge complaint we're having now. It's good for the residents, the burden probably shifts to the delivery people and therefore some of the business owners will not make the walk from Adams and Granite all the way up to the restaurants. We're aware of that, we're concerned about it, but we felt we were shifting the burden to the delivery companies and that if the police enforced it strongly, it would force them to comply. So rather than the residents dealing with the headaches of, you know, large trucks coming down, you know, Franklin, Bassett, Church Street, we were taking the burden off them. We felt the current loading zone, a lot of residents, they're taking the chance, I'm only going in the coffee shop two minutes and, you know, if they were going into a place for an hour, they might not take the chance in the loading zone, but they are running in for coffee, which is creating two situations. Either the police are just endlessly trying to enforce and they can't keep up with it or the bigger problem is while they're in for that two minutes, a truck comes by, you can't get in the spot, it's seeking out spots on its own. So we shifted the burden to Granite Ave, figure the trucks stay on the main road, there's no side street issues, it's not in front of businesses with high turnover needs. The biggest problem is, you know, you're relying on that worker pushing a crate of, you know, 100 pounds of food or liquor up the street, basically a block, a block and a half. So everyone was consensus, it needs to change and to at least try it. That's the history kind of on that.
Yeah, my observation, I was down the square one morning in, in the old location, is it was more the, the striping and, and the signage was so poor that I don't think a lot of people even realized they were parking in a loading zone.
I do agree with that.
So are we going to make sure it gets really blocked, painted a different color and?
Yeah, that's Joe Lynch would oversee that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to make sure of that.
There was definitely an issue with that and, you know, we were in data with appeals because, you know, we tried to increase enforcing it, which we did, but the problem was, a large number of people came with appeals and they really, with good faith, didn't know the signs. It was kind of unclear marking, so we have to do a better job on that, I agree.
Yep.
And like I said, I did, you know, speak to a lot of people on the phone, you know, Vance, you know, from the restaurants, I spoke to Paul Travis, I spoke to Tate, President Chamber, I spoke to a lot of people on the phone and, you know, they all have an opinion and a various, but, you know, they all meant well, were trying to help and they were open to trying new things, but everybody, including those three, all had different ideas. You know what I mean? So they know where we're coming from, they're just concerned about the distance the person would walk. We are too, but now we feel like we'll only have to enforce it against a handful of delivery drivers. We're currently, we're trying to enforce it against every person who's stopping for a coffee.
I think the first order of business that you accomplished was shifting the burden off the residents, which was what we're most concerned with, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, it sounds like a reasonable suggestion and we can, recommendation, we can see how it works out and if we have to revisit, we revisit it.
Right.
All right, do we have any other discussion on that particular motion? Then all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one, we just, and Chief King just touched upon it, is Granite Avenue to designate a loading zone, 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Granite Avenue, in the three parking spaces directly north of the intersection of Adams Street.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, all right. With the boards concerned, why don't we take a three-minute break? We have a request from the Times reporter for a photo with the chief and we have several people who want to leave and several people want to come into the room, so that'll help us with the traffic flow.
Okay, at some point there's a definitely more issue.
Oh, certainly, Chief, yes. Okay, then we're on to fire needs and then our government. Susan Galvin, aren't we reading on her too?
Hmm.
Susan Galvin coming up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're back on. So we're, this is the resumed July 26th meeting and the Chief King is still with us and the Chief wanted to address one other matter before we end his, his report.
Yeah, I just want to address this more as police chief than as traffic commission chairman.
Thank you, Chief.
You know, historically, for the last several years, the police department has conducted a national night out. It's the first week of August and that's a program that started throughout the country. It's not done everywhere, but it's done a fair amount of places across the country and it started back in the eighties and the point was to, you know, engage the police in the community and specifically crime prevention and neighborhood watches and stuff like that. Milton's done it for the last several years. This year, I don't think we can be able to do it and I just want to make sure the boards are aware of that and I'd like to explain the reasons. It's a major event, it involves significant time, labor, money, there's a lot of planning involved, there's a lot of work and that work's done months in advance, usually starting in like May, May and June, because you basically have to lock in vendors, you have to lock in commitments, not just private vendors, but even things like, you know, the sheriff mentioned earlier, he usually sends support people and stuff like that. They're easier than the private people. But, you know, this is a unique year for us when we're in a period of transition. You know, we were going through the process of screening for police chiefs during the months of May and June and, you know, respectfully, nobody knew who would be chief come July. And, you know, I happened to be away for a significant period of June on a pre-planned event, so basically, you know, people being respectful and not wanting to, you know, step on other people's toes, not knowing who would be in charge, we held off on planning the event and now come July, you know, I was selected chief. I'm a huge advocate, as I said earlier, of community engagement, community policing. I promote it more than anything and I plan to continue that. Unfortunately, July just wasn't enough time to plan this event, so I don't think we can have it next week, you know, long-term. I'm certainly open to, you know, I'd like to evaluate and look at it, see, you know, how we could continue it, whether to modify it, you know, whether to do other events, you know, and basically take the year and do it right, but it would not have been the same thing it has been. It's been very successful, very popular and basically because of this unique situation of the transition and the timing and, you know, a lot of personnel just didn't want to do anything and I can speak for me personally, I wouldn't have done work not knowing I was going to be sitting here because I wouldn't have wanted to lock in in a future chief without their wishes and input. So, you know, every candidate probably was being respectful of each other and not wanting to do it, you know, the prior chief was leaving, he probably was being respectful of the future candidate. So because of the circumstance of that, you know, it just won't happen this year and I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that and ask, excuse me, answer any questions you might have.
Are you going to do any, try and do any smaller events throughout this year or not?
Yes, absolutely. There's no question, I plan to do periodic events throughout the year.
Okay.
On a regular basis this year and every year thereafter.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, that's totally understandable. Obviously, you know, when it's done to a certain magnitude, you don't want to, you know, take a, take a step back and I think it's a smart move, you know, when you look at the resources that are involved and the planning that's involved. And by tying it into smaller community events throughout the year, you know, in different parts of our community, might be even more effective for a little bit before you decide whether you want to get back into that long-term.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And as you said, Chief, it's a considerable expense, so there may be ways of modifying it and saving some money.
Right.
Which would be good.
Yes, I'm definitely going to explore that before we plan again. And in the meantime, we are, you know, we have three weeks of DRCAM this summer, there's a, the DRCAM going on right now, that's a lot of personnel at that. So, you know, I just don't want to appear we're scaling back, it's just a unique situation with the transition and the timing.
Okay, great.
Great. Thanks, good.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Next item on our agenda is a report from our Fire Space Needs Committee. We have a few members of the committee here tonight.
Hi, Steve.
And with me tonight.
If you'd all like to come up, please feel free, however you'd like to present.
You know, Chief Grant and Tom Hiss from our committee.
Good evening, everyone, thank you.
We have something very exciting to announce to you tonight, which allow us to do a lot of outreach with the, with the town. I want to give you an update of the status of where we are with our, with our project at this point in time and our contract that we have with Castle Booze Associates. Talk a little about the cost that we think, we may have some cost estimates that have come up and talk about this nice website that we've developed with our consultant, Castle Booze, that we would like to launch today or after this. But we want you guys to see it first and we have shared this with town moderator Bob Hiss and he gave us some very good suggestions about this, but we're very excited about this. The project itself, we've been working on this contract since, seems like, but after the, after we awarded that contract in 2015 to Castle Booze Associates, to look at the work that we had done as a committee, what we presented at town meeting, to see if some of the things that we thought were right, were right and what could be changed. We listened to a lot of folks at town, well, some folks at town meeting, about the need to save as much as the, of the existing structures as we could, especially this 1888 structure behind us. And I think some folks should be happy with what they proposed. But again, there were a lot of discussions that went on between our consultant and members of the Milton Fire Department to get their ideas of what their needs were, going over best business practices, if you will, fire matics in the, in the fire business in the 21st century and with Chief Grant's input and with his department's input, they've come up with a proposal which we think meets the needs of the Milton Fire Department in the 21st century. We always, we tried to get this down to two sites as we've presented at town meeting, but the lack of town-owned available space became an issue for us. And we're still wedded to those three locations in town, which, before the NFPA came up with standards, we meet this department in those three locations, meet the standards for fire response about four minutes throughout the town.
In the current locations?
In the current locations we're in right now, in East Milton, behind us here at Town Hall and up at Atherton Street on 138. So that's kind of where our project is now, they've given us some good plans. This is our website, it's at www.miltonfirestations.org. And when you go through this, Anne Marie, could you just go up to the top, please, for a minute? You'll see these tabs up there, just a homepage. The project team lists all of you with all of us and our team from Castle Booze Associates, both Mike McKeon as the principal and also, I think Bob's up there too, isn't he? Bob Mitchell from Bob Mitchell Associates, who's built a lot of fire stations throughout New England. And there's nothing written in granite, if you will. Matter of fact, we're not using granite at all, it just looks like granite. But again, we have a tab that has existing conditions, which will show you some of the pictures we've shared with town meeting about East Fire Station. As you scroll over each one, it tells you what that is and if you were to click on that, it would just give you a bigger picture of that on the screen. And that's for each station, from the headquarters building to East Milton Engine Two and then finally, Engine Four, right? Getting these right, yeah. Up at Atherton Street.
Been spending too much time with me.
Yes. So and that's the current conditions that we have in the, in the existing stations and some of the things that we found during our study that was brought up again by Castle Booze. On the plans and renderings, this is just a, working with our consultants, what are we talking about doing here? And if you, you can see a site plan, this is on the Milton Fire Headquarters. And this is kind of, we, this looks really cool.
So these are conceptual plans?
Pardon?
Conceptual plans?
Conceptual plans at all. So what the Milton Department, if you take a look at it, if you could click on that site plan one, please, Anne Marie. This is the site behind us, you'll see that we're actually shifting into that driveway, if you will, that exists right now, to put the apparatus bay out there and keep most of the existing structure we have there in place and re-renovate that and use it as part of the new Milton Fire Headquarters. Up on the second floor, we have a, you'll see we have a training, a training room, which we currently don't have for our fire department. But that outlined in red is the existing structure we'll be keeping. This is the second floor and as people go through it, they can look at and give us some comments on this. This is what the new fire station would look like. It does work with the existing traffic pattern here at Town Hall and it actually allows us to put some more additional parking spaces on the property, as well as on the, as we look at it, the right side that goes down to Wall Street, but we have an option to actually close that off to not allow a pass-through and put much more parking out there, but again, not have that as a throughway through Town Hall. And this is what it looks like from the back of Town Hall here. And the last one is a very nice perspective at night that we liked. And you can see that the existing, on the right-hand side where the flag is, exactly what part of that we're keeping with the old structure and make, incorporating that into the new plans. Thank you. Engine Two in East Milton, this is the proposal we've talked about for the last two years, is to do a swap with the existing site where the East Milton Library is. It's between the post office and the church on the left-hand side. You can see that we've tried to situate this on that lot where the apparatus coming out would be away from the church and the neighborhood and closed it to the post office, but that's the site we're looking at. This does increase our ability, the department's ability to get out of the East Milton quicker to make some responses. And again, this is a one-story firehouse with one engine in it. It would look like this, again, with some, and this is all LED, state-of-the-art type of construction we're proposing, that would take advantage of technology in the 21st And one of the things we did say was that, when we say swap this, what we'd like to think about doing, and there's been some discussion about this, this is why I address that, we do not hate the Milton Art Center, we love the Milton Art Center, my wife goes to the Milton Art Center, we've had long conversations, I had a long conversation with Sue Hoy. We'd like, we think this is a good opportunity for the town to switch this. We understand the value of arts, I understand the value of arts, my daughter is an architect and art historian, my son-in-law is an art, an architectural historian, I'm with the arts. We want to continue that as a resource to the town. We think that given the time we're talking about doing this, we really haven't talked about, we know it's not happening tomorrow, given the funding that Tom tells me about all the time. This will be a working project for a while and we think we have ample opportunity to get a lot of good input from the community, as well as make the necessary repairs that would be necessary to do a nice art center where the existing fire station is. But there's a lot of things we can propose about this and talk about over the next year or two, so it's way down the road to even getting close to that. But that's what we're talking about doing and we've been talking about this since we made our presentation at town meeting in 2015. Atherton Street.
On that point, Steve, I'd like to come back to that point, but if you, if you want, if you prefer to finish the presentation, maybe we should do that first and then we'll come back to East Milton.
Atherton Street is an interesting thing. There's a lot of love for this old firehouse out there, perhaps not in 21st century for firefighting, but it's a wonderful old building and the story behind Atherton Street is an amazing story, where this gentleman built that because his daughter was killed in the fire on that side of town in 1901. So we did not want to just take this building down and build on the same site, so we had some issues about how do we situate the equipment that's up there that responds to the, to Blue Hills, to Holden's Pond, and it's stationed up there in this firehouse right now. So the proposal we have is two one-story kind of buildings up there behind the existing firehouse that's up there on Atherton Street. There are some issues with elevations that we have to deal with, but that's the proposal that is right now. Again, as I said, this is not granite, it just looks like it's granite, but it's a composite material for the 21st century. It kind of blends in nicely with the, with the ground up there, there's plenty of room to do this up there. And that would be the main firehouse, another approach coming up Bradley.
What would the, what would the old building?
Well, that's up to, I guess, the town and you folks, what we do with surplus property. We thought that a.
It's a beautiful building.
It's a beautiful building. It needs some work, but it's not what we need for a 21st century fire station. One of the things that we talked about in committee was possibly moving the fire museum up here in the chemical, in the chemical building, moving that up to this facility, make this a museum for the fire, Milton Fire Department and using this building as maybe a place that you might want to house the consolidated facilities department. You have these options in front of you as we, as these become as part of the project, surplus buildings. So those are the things that we still need to have a long discussion about. And that, as you see, in the back of this, you see the, the second building out there, which we would put the brush fire unit, a boat, that would, the department currently has and uses when necessary, but that's why we need that second facility though. So that's kind of where we are with this, as far as the plans and running. Under resources, if you just click on that, please, we have the, this whole study that was done by Castle Booze under 2016. Anne Marie, if you could just click on that a bit. This is their report and if you clicked on any one of these different items, you would go right to the report. So this is their analysis of the plumbing, and just scroll down, I think. And you'll see that, that's their written report and anyone can go back and be as happy as we were reading it.
That's good.
And that's for every fire station that we have, there are cost estimates in here, so it goes on, and it's a pretty lengthy report. If you could close that. And then we also have on, if you go back to the resources page, you'll see that we have a town meeting presentation we did in 2015, the 2014 Fire Space Needs Committee report. Our meeting minutes are posted here, if you click on that, you'll get the agendas that are posted on the town's website by clicking on the appropriate month and it'll bring up our agendas. I'd like to say thank you to Barbara Martin from, from your staff, she's been very helpful for us getting our stuff together, getting us room to do this. Now we have some additional links throughout the town, you know, to Mitchell Associates, to Milton Fire Department, town and Milton website and Castle Booze itself. Finally, the last two things we have here is frequently asked questions. We started with our own, we thought would be frequently asked questions. By clicking on the down arrow to any one of these, you will get an answer to these questions. And we have, contact us, so town residents can give us a question they may have and we'll answer that hopefully within 24 hours is our goal and we'll see how well that goes over the next whatever. But that's, we think this is a good, a good mechanism for us to present what the project looks like, to listen to townspeople with their concerns and their questions and try to answer those and have this discussion going on. On the main page, we have a section we have not completed yet, which is upcoming meetings. Talking with Anne Marie and a couple of other folks, we were going to try to meet during the course of the summer, but someone told me that it would be a good idea to wait till people come back from vacation and get children back in school, so we're going to start coming up with the schedule, September, October. We were trying to get this done for town meeting in October, but as you know better than anybody, we're postponing that town meeting and we'll put that in place. We were thinking of probably having an October meeting on this project with town meeting members to give them a briefing of what this is and listen to their concerns in a little more detail. So with that said, and we would be more than happy to meet with anybody, we opened that up to the folks in the Milton Art Center, we'd love to meet with them. Anyone in town, we met with, Jack met with the Rotary Club, so we'd like to open that up once we get this up and running. So we'd like to open that up once we get this up and running. Cost is what someone, we have estimated cost here of, at this point in time, for all three stations of roughly 25 million. And we have to meet with the appropriate, well, with you folks, with Town Meeting, with the Capital Planning Committee. How do we roll this project out? Unlike the schools, we think there's need to do this right away, because we've been, anyone who's been in the firehouse will know that. But the reality is, we can stage this, do one, you know, as it gets done. You can do it all at once. The longer you delay, costs go up, because it's the nature of the beast. You know, and Tom, you know, you've spoken about this kind of eloquently at Town Meeting. So those are the things we're looking at, and how do we move to the next level of this game as we go down this project? Adam Chairman, you have some questions?
Yeah, I'd like to come back to the top, unless you had anything further to present?
That's unless Tom and Jack would like that.
On the issue of East Milton Fire, the East Milton Library and the East Milton Fire Station, I guess, let me start with a question. Your conceptual design, Castle Booze, they're the ones who came up with these conceptual designs.
Yes.
Now, have they looked at other locations? And the reason I ask that is because when this was presented at Town Meeting and presented to us, I think before, or maybe we had a follow-up meeting after Town Meeting, but it's been a while. The committee at that time was looking at a few locations, the land across the street from Font Bonn, which is actually under the cemetery trustees. I think there was a mention of the East Milton Library. There was also talk about the State DPW Yard, which there's been some different changes happening with that, which said that may not be available. But has the conceptual design company done designs just for one location or for the other locations that you were also talking about? Keeping in mind that there's not been any vote by this board, which has control of that building, to locate a station there, should we do that?
Absolutely. I'm very aware of that. The first thing we looked at was, do we go, we try to get two fire stations to meet the needs of the fire department and the town. The two locations that we had, that we identified, one was Conservation Land up off Canton Ave, and the other was this piece of property, Kitty Connor to Font Bonn, at the corner of Brook and-
Center.
And Center. Those met the runtimes we were looking for to, for response time, both for fire and for emergency medical services. But the Conservation Land just threw us for a loop. We couldn't get that to Bud's, we thought.
Where is the Conservation Land?
It's, it's on Sumner and Canton. It's like one block in from Blue Hill Parkway, up by Pope's Pond. So we were looking, at that point, we were looking back at our runtimes and response times, and it came down to the three locations we had somewhere close to those locations. So as you can tell with what we're proposing for the fire headquarters building, it's in the same location it is now. The second one was Atherton Street, and that's pretty much in the same location it is now. Good response time both to Curry College, that part of town, the west part of town, as well as to Fuller Village. And the third location was, we were looking at, what do we do with East Milton? We originally looked at the DPW site, and we were told that there were a couple of things going on with that. It might be a hotel, it might be something the town want to do, and then I guess the state property became not available. We asked about, we looked at renovating and doing stuff on the existing site, and the site's just too small to handle what needs to be done for a fire station in the 21st century. The things that firefighters see, that they respond to, and it's, it definitely doesn't meet some of those code conventions we're looking at in the year 2000. The other thing we proposed was putting it on the deck. And we were told by a previous Board of Selectmen that that plan was way down the way to start doing things on the deck, and you should find someplace else. It became, as we looked around for town-owned property, the East Milton, the former East Milton Library site looked like something we could work with, and we thought about, again, making a swap with, if you want to put the Milton Art Center where the existing fire station is, knowing full well that this station was not going to be turned around in the next, I, we're being kind of honest, we think five or 10 years before we get to that part of the project, things are going to have to be done to keep that fire station going, which would mean repairs to infrastructure there. So that while it might not be, might not be able to support a modern fire station in 21st century, we thought there are other uses you could use in that, that facility for, and we thought the Milton Art Center might be a good swap to do that. I think you still have to keep it as a town building. Chief and I have talked about this, and our committee's talked about it, is that there are a lot of things in the basement of that building that to move them might make a lot of things cost prohibitive. We've got the lighting that's controlled for the town, both in the square and I think all the way down Adams Street, down to the Quincy Line. There's some communications equipment there we've talked about. We've looked at the whole issue of the fire boxes. Do you maintain those? Do we think about taking those out? Those are discussions for the fire department and for you guys, not so much for our project. But we think those are discussions that have to take place. So that's why the project looks like it is. And we asked them to look at a lot of things, but as you know, if you can find this town property that meets that, you know, square footage somewhere in East Milton-
That's the way I'm asking, you know, because it, I think the Master Plan Committee may have a, want to have some interest in this general discussion, including about the Atherton Street Station and reuse, but we, I know there's been a lot of talk about the Art Center. I think we have to keep in mind, the Art Center is a current tenant, and they have a few more years on their lease, but it's not so much the Art Center as it is the former East Milton Library, which a number of years ago, I remember from Town Meeting, there were, when that property was transferred from the library trustees to the then Board of Selectmen, there were a lot of Town Meeting members from East Milton who got up and said, we'd really like to keep this as some kind of a community resource or a cultural center or something that might potentially down the road, we don't, no one knows what's going to happen 10 or 20 years out, that maybe it might be a library again. But I think their focus was on a community resource. And there were a lot of people who spoke to them, and I think there may have been, we'd have to go back and watch the tape, there may have been some commitments to try to do that, and I think that's probably how, I don't know if, Tom, if you were on the board when-
I was.
-the Art Center lease was entered into, but I, from what I recall, not having been on the board at that time, was just that there was some intent to try to keep that building, even though it's going to be leased to an art center, the art center opens it up to a lot of different concerts and community events, and the Neighborhood Association sometimes has meetings over there. So it's a resource in the area that is very highly valued by people in the area. I spent the spring knocking on a lot of doors, because I was in the middle of a heavily contested race, and I talked to a lot of people in that area. There's a lot of opposition to putting a fire station there because of the narrowness of the streets, and a lot of people feel that the center, the art, the library building is a good resource and is not a great location for a fire station. I happen to personally share that view. The board has not discussed that as a board, but we've probably all heard from people in the area. I think this board certainly is very supportive of the fire department and understands and knows that we need to, we're starting down this process, we're, we're going to have to address whether it's on a temporary, short-term basis, some of the living quarters that I think we need to put some capital monies into on the short term. We did two years ago, we didn't this past year, but I think the Capitol Committee needs to take that back up, because we could be looking at a long period of time. But then there's also the longer-term picture, and is that, is a fire station in that area the best use for the property? I think a lot of residents in that area would be very opposed to the fire station moving there. Clearly, we have to do something, and the question is, is the existing location, you're telling us that the existing location is not sufficient to meet 21st century needs. I'm just concerned that the conceptual plan only took into account that site, so that if we were to come up with another site with different dimensions, we're probably going to have to go back to the drawing board and the design. But that's really why I asked you the question, is, is that a design that perhaps could fit in other location, obviously depending on the size of the law?
Let me say that we do not live in the black box. We understand a lot of these same issues. We've looked at these same issues that you're, you've raised here tonight. But it does become an issue of what do you do with that fire station? How do you maintain fire protection with sufficient, with, with appropriate response times for the coverage of Engine Two somewhere in that? I mean, at some point, you gotta say, what do we do with this? Where do we put it? And I think that's what we'd like to have this discussion-
Yes.
-talk about and say, okay, so this is it. Now we've got to be big boys and girls and say, where are we going to put this thing? And there's going to be some big decisions to go with that.
I'd like to say that I, I think that, you know, I, I'm very sensitive to the needs of the, the community over there, and I had knocked on some of those same doors and understand that. I think, though, that this committee has, has come before us with a, with a very good plan, and I think that they deserve the opportunity to go out there and host these meetings and educate the residents and get the feedback that, that is critical, you know, and maybe at the end of the day, that, that we come back to that point where, that we need to look for another spot. But I think that through education and through, obviously, you've done a fabulous website that has a lot of information in there, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, that's really good.
And I think it's helpful. I think that we're going to have debate, and I think debate's healthy, and I think at the end of the day, you know, our residents have a, have a big concern about public safety. And I think that, you know, you know, I, I trust this committee and, and Chief Grant and the people that work for, for us and serve us every day, that, you know, they, they should deserve the best of opportunity in the, in the spacing needs that they have for the 21st century. So, you know, in short, basically, let's let the discussion take place.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that, yes.
If I could just add one comment with respect to, would the plan be adaptable? I think that, you know, first of all, these are, these are very conceptual level plans, and probably the bulk of the work that the consultants did is not even specific to the plans. Probably what was much more time-consuming from their end was determining exactly what the fire department's needs were going to be at each of the locations. That information will be valid even if another site becomes available or recommended. And in fact, I think having a plan that's drawn, even, even though it might, might want to be, be tweaked or realigned in some way, almost becomes a quick way to evaluate whether a different site is in fact suitable and of enough size and the right dimensions to accommodate the needs. So I don't think this effort would be wasted, even should that-
That's good. That's great.
But I'm of the same concern that you have, Katie. I don't, I would not favor putting the, the fire station on the, the East Milton Library site. I mean, I, I think for the reasons you articulated, you know, number one, the residents really don't want it. It will be in the middle of a residential area. You know, not that Central isn't either, but, but it's, it'd be new to that area. They do like the library there. We did kind of make a commitment that we would keep that library building. You are correct in that. So, and, and I think there are other locations in East Milton, and I've named one. I don't want to say where, but there, there are other locations I think we could explore. So I-
I, I agree. I think there are other, especially if we're looking at five to 10 years, I think there are some locations that we can explore. The, I don't know if I mentioned it, but the big, one of the big concerns there is the narrowness of the streets. Hollis, Babcock, Andrews, there's, there's a lot of cars coming through there, especially during rush hour, and the streets are narrow, if the fire trucks are pulling out that way-
They wouldn't be pulling out that way.
Okay, but if, even if they're going out on Edge Hill, then you're, you're talking about losing a few parking spaces on the front. That was a concern I heard. So I think just the congestion of the area is what really concerned the residents, and the fact that this came across to them as though it was all approved, that this was going to be a done deal, and, and what I've tried telling the ones who've called me is, look, this is still at the very beginning stages. There's a committee appointed by the moderator that's looking at this. They're doing a lot of good, hard work, but no decision has been made to transfer control of that building to, for, you know, for a fire station versus for a library or a general municipal purpose. So I, I think people just need to know that this, now that you've got the website up, you're going to be having some community meetings, so it'll be a lot of discussion, a lot of opportunity for people to weigh in, and nothing has been decided yet. But there are some concerns that, that we're voicing, having heard from some of the residents. On the other hand, I, I understand David's point, this committee has done some good work, and let's, let's see what the feedback is.
I share the same concerns. I want to be clear, I share the same concerns as you and Tom, but at the same point in time, I think that to just end it right now, you know, without taking a vote or really letting them get out the door and have a, have a good discussion with the residents, because sometimes things can change when you have some, some fluid discussions. And I'm not saying that that's where we're going to end up, because I do agree with both you and Katie that, you know, that the neighborhood in their, in their interest should come first, but, and maybe there will be other sites that will, will be presented to us over the next year or two or three years, and that's great. But I think that getting the feedback is important, and I think that we should, you know, allow them to just get out the door and do their due diligence.
I think we are all in agreement on that.
Good.
That's good.
That's great.
Tom, you can give me that piece of paper with the location, we'd be happy to look at.
Okay, Jack already knows it. Yeah, the, the question is feasibility, but-
I'm not confident in, to be honest with you. Any other questions we can answer?
What, so you touched on a little bit, but your, your website is now live, so people can go to the-
Yes, yep.
MiltonFireStations.org is the website, and then, starting in the fall, you're going to have some community meetings.
We're going to start scheduling meetings September, October, November, we'll meet with other groups. I, we've reached out to the folks from the Milton Art Center. Our goal is to have one probably at, one big public meeting at Cunningham Park, one at the senior center here on Walnut, and another one up at, hopefully Deborah would let me do that at Fuller Village, to stop that geographical kind of discussion. But it's a discussion point.
I think the Master Plan Committee, as I said, would be interested in it. No, I'm going to report on that later, that the Master Plan Committee would like to take on the Wharf as, as one of their projects. So I think for the immediate future, that might be a big item on the agenda for the Master Plan Committee, but I think it's something that they, you know, I, I can talk to Cheryl Togayes, who's our chair for that committee, but it may be something that that committee would like to invite you to come in and give this same presentation and talk about, especially that Atherton Street Fire Station and the preservation of some of the historic nature of the buildings.
And they were, they were one of the committees we identified that we need to reach out to when we get to this stage of our discussion, so the Capital Planning Committee-
Yep.
-you folks, Town Meeting, the Master Plan Committee, and there must be about eight million other committees we could probably meet with. We're unhappy to do that.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you for your support.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim here all night. You think the bonds will be very quickly, should we move the bonds up?
Yeah.
They just moved a click. There's a lot of discussion. We've got a lot of members here for the, in the Town Cork and the Town Government Study Committee. Our Town Treasurer has been here since seven o'clock on the bonds, and it's almost nine o'clock, so if the others, I think this will be very brief. I think if the others don't, if the rest of the committee doesn't mind waiting a few minutes, I'm going to be recused on this discussion, but I want to ask our Town Treasurer, Jim McCullough, to come up to the table. We have some bonds that are going to be voted upon-
Since this morning.
And, and David, if you don't mind, speaking this one, we appreciate it. And I am recused on this because I work with the Town's Bond Council.
So this is good news, Jim?
This is all good news. We rolled up all our bands into a bond. We also had some refunding opportunities. The new money issuance is $7,793,414, and the refunding is $865,000. We used $55,000 of the bond premium to buy that down. It was originally $920,000. So I was just going to speed it up. The opportunity for savings, we're going to save $141,451 the next 12 years on those issuances. The exempt library is $5,153. So that goes right back to the taxpayer. It's small, but it, it's something. And we sent the bonds out, we had the auction this morning, we had seven bids. The winning bid was FTN Financial Capital Markets, and the true interest cost was $1.685,139. We had a bond premium on that of $490,018.56. After all the issuance costs and the $55,000 we used for the refunding, it'll be somewhere in the vicinity of $360,000 that we can use for capital costs for next year.
Amazing when you think about an issuing bond for one and a half percent and getting a premium on it.
We got a premium.
It's not a bad deal.
It's all, it's all good news on this one. The savings, usually when you do a refund, you want to save at least 5%. We saved 15.944%, which is huge. I mean, that's, that's a very great savings on, you know, on refunding. So that's what I have for you today, and somebody would like to-
Yeah, I have a, a long motion ahead of me, so I'm gonna, don't hold your breath. Propose a motion that in order to reduce interest costs, the Treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from one time to two time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling-
Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all the town's $2,191,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2007 bonds dated August 15, 2007, maturing on and after August 15, 2017, collectively the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunded bonds, refunding bonds, excuse me, issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium in interest on the refunded bonds and costs of issuance of the refunding bonds. That the sale of the $8,658,414 general obligation municipal purpose loan of the 2016 bonds of the town dated August 10, 2016, the bonds, to FTN Financial Capital Markets at the price of $9,144,798.92, and accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on August 1 of the year and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. 2017, $853,414 at an interest rate of 2%. 2018, $770,000 at 3%. 2019, $740,000 at 3%. 2020, $635,000 at 3%. 2021, $495,000 at 4%. 2022, $480,000 at 4%. 2023, $470,000 at 4%. 2024, $470,000 at 3%. 2027, $360,000 at 2%. 2028, $295,000 at 2%. 2029, $295,000 at 2%. 2030, $290,000 at 2%. 2031, $290,000 at 2%. 2032, $290,000 at 2%. 2033, $290,000 at 2.5%. 2034, $290,000 at 2.1%. 2025 at 400, I guess I missed down there. 2025 at $405,000 at 2%. 2026, $360,000, 2%. Skipping forward to 2035, $290,000, 2.15%. And 2026 at $290,000, 2.2%. Then in connection with the marketing and the scale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice sale and preliminary official statement dated July 18, 2016, and a final official statement dated July 26, 2016, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. That the bond shall be subject to redemption at the auction of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. That the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. That we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and the bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds. That each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and such all actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Good job. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a little added, we did meet with standing and pause a few weeks ago, and we are still a AAA-rated community. And the bonds will be here on Friday morning around 10 o'clock to be signed.
Great. Thanks again, Jim. Appreciate it. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, David. All right. We now have a conference with our town government study committee. We have many, we have the chair and many members of the committee. We also have the town clerk here on the issue of a special election. So I'd invite the chair and any members of the committee, we'll pull up some extra chairs if others would like to come up to the table, and the town clerk is welcome to join us as well.
Hey, Rick.
Hey, Tom. Hey, David.
Good evening, Rick. Good evening, Susan.
How are you? Good evening, Susan.
While we have Susan, we have, you're going to give us a report on some of the ongoing projects you're working on. Shall we take the issue of the special election first? Or we have the town clerk here?
You want me to start off?
Yes, Mr. Neely. Just pulling out my paperwork.
Okay. Thank you. One of the reasons we're here tonight is to talk about the three-member and becoming a five-member board of selectmen, which is scheduled, as you know, the legislation passed and is hopefully going to be voted upon in the near future. And as the town knows from reviewing this at the town meeting, there are substantial benefits that are in the legislation. And the reason that the committee has raised the issue is because we feel that those benefits are something we should ascertain very soon, quickly. And so certainly in terms after the legislation passed in May, looked at the issue of how fast the election could be presented to the voters. The presidential election is identified as a great opportunity when you have 80-plus percent of the voters showing up for that election. So the feeling is there was a great opportunity with the November presidential election to get this on the ballot and to get a large number of residents, voters in the town to have a chance to express an opinion. So we think, you know, the reason we brought this issue to everyone's attention was that, again, there is substantial benefits that are, benefit the town by having five-member board of selectmen. The belief is that the board will be able to delegate more duties to the additional members of the board. And in conjunction with the adoption of the strong town administrator, the board will be able to act more on a strategic basis and act more planning, in any head, planning the future of the town. So in consideration of all that, the committee certainly has met and talked with Susan, and she's been very helpful and very patient with us in going through all the numbers. And it, you know, as we looked at this reluctantly, the committee feels that with the cost of $30,000 and the effort that Susan's department would incur, that it doesn't really make sense at this point to add this to the presidential ballot as a separate ballot. So in the perfect world, if this were in fact a singular ballot, you know, if there were a case where there was no additional cost, that's something the committee would strongly endorse. But in consideration of the additional cost, despite the benefits of having potentially a five-member board of election this coming April, the committee would agree with the idea that it would be deferred. So this, the result of all this, it means that the town, unless you call a special election before April for a cost, this presumably would be on the April ballot, with resulting that the election for, if it's successful, the election for the five-member board would be on the April 2018 town election ballot. Again, unless you call it a special election for the five members. So in any case, this effectively defers for one year the benefits of adding the additional two members, which is in the legislation that was adopted and recommended by the town meeting. So that's really the position of the committee, that we just think that there's too much additional cost and too much work that Susan's area would have to prepare for and get ready.
Perfect. I'm glad you came to that conclusion, because I had a very similar thought that $30,000 is an awful lot of money to spend for something that really doesn't seem to be any rush to do. We actually had a discussion about the presidential election when we were going through this process with the town government study committee and the Warren Committee, and there was a specific discussion not to have it at a presidential election, but it's a town question. It should be decided on a town ballot. So I was actually surprised to see that there was a request for the presidential, given the prior conversations that we had had on it. But Susan, do you want to add anything to this? It sounds like the recommendation here, the request is essentially being withdrawn.
Right. And I appreciate that. I did put a tremendous amount of time and effort into answering all your questions.
We were very appreciative of the work that she did, because she answered multiple, multiple questions.
And, you know, I hope I gave a full understanding. I am very glad that you came to that conclusion. I really think it would have been a disservice, not only financially, but to our residents. So I am very pleased that you did come to that decision.
So when I talked with Susan, she had cited an example of another community in which a town question was placed on a separate ballot during the 2012 presidential election, and it caused ballot boxes to break down and all kinds of problems.
Yes. It caused quite havoc, and it was the Toninida. And despite the town clerk's recommendation to not have it, it did go forward, and it was very costly to the residents, to the town financially. And so I am very glad that Milton has decided not to move forward with that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the support.
It's good news.
I think it's great news. I think, you know, everybody had a nice discussion about it, but ultimately, you know, the cost was a cost. And I think, you know, as it was set in the beginning for the next special or annual election, and it'll go through, and the voters will decide what's best. So thank you again, both of you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, Susan, putting this information together for all of us. Okay, well, then why do we go...
Briefly, why don't I just give you an update on what the committee's been working on since our last report? So one, starting off, one of the things we're working on, you recall, is the chief procurement officer. And back in February of 2016, the town school consolidation committee in the blue room downstairs presented a report to the board regarding the adoption of a chief procurement officer. We have been looking at that. We have a consensus on our committee that it not be part of the financial realization, and in fact, it should proceed on its own as a separate article. We're working on terms of creating a bylaw that would lay out the duties and responsibilities that would cover all departments, so that even though, for example, there's an elected board that is not reporting to the board of selectmen, the chief procurement officer would have responsibilities that cover those other elected boards. And the reason for that is the legislation that exists, Chapter 30B, is the legislation that applies to all town agencies and departments, regardless of who the elected board is. So we need to be ensure that, you know, that the chief procurement officer has the responsibilities and the duties and permissions, if you will, to oversee the procurement in all areas. So we're looking at that for the next town meeting. So if you have a town meeting in January or February, then our intention is to have an article ready for that town meeting. So that is working away, if you will, and that's getting ready. So I just, we need to know at some point, when you decide if you're going to have that, what the filing deadline is.
Okay.
Another one we're working on and looking at is possible changes in the personnel board, updating the bylaw and the operations. As you know, now there is some operational responsibilities, and we're looking at whether the personnel board shouldn't in fact be more advisory rather than involved in some of the operations. There are, in fact, you know, under the Chapter 65 of the Town Administrator Act, there is a question as to whether the non-department heads are in fact, should be going to the personnel board. So that's a gray area that needs to be addressed. It's very clear that the department heads are appointed strictly by the town administrator. So that part is clear, and that was a change that was outlined in the legislation. But it's not as clear with regard to the non-department heads, and that's been outlined by town council. So that is one of the aspects we're looking at. Now, we've met with the personnel board. I would say that at this point, they don't really want to give up their operational role, but we're continuing to, you know, work with them, and we're also looking at a number of other communities. So we're taking a sample of 10 to 15 other comparable communities and looking at what they've done and how has their structure changed over the years. And certainly, if you look at our existing bylaw, there are some responsibilities in there that don't make sense for the personnel board, such as the maintenance of all the records, the personnel records. Well, that's certainly a labor, does not maintain the records. It's clear that it's not their responsibility. That one, everyone agrees on. It's really when you get into the operational role in terms of approving individual positions throughout the departments that are controlled by the board of selectmen. So that's what we're looking at. Another one we're also doing research on is the financial realization. As you know, we've talked in the past how this town is more fragmented than most with financial authority. That is broken out in a number of different areas. We're looking at a number of comparable towns. You can see that many of them have a CFO or a financial director that is responsible for the financial operations, and that's the research we're gathering and collecting right now. Another one we did look at was legal cost. We've been asked to look at the legal costs and whether it made sense to have in-house counsel rather than just having all legal requests sent out. And after looking at that, we don't think that the, the committee's not convinced that would save dollars. Committee's not convinced that, we certainly do have some high legal cost here, but we have some unique cases. You would need unique skill sets to address a lot of the issues that the board and the town departments have faced over the last three years. There appears not to be, it doesn't make sense to have, at this point, we believe, an in-house counsel.
The only thing you would save would be the $50,000, $60,000 retainer that we pay, pretty much.
And it's, the question is, you know, overall, the real savings when you think about in terms of how much you'd end up outsourcing anyways.
Right. Yeah. Everything else in the law budget is special litigation and, yeah, would probably not...
Just to have so many different, one minute you have a land case, the other minute you're talking about the aviation issue.
Yep.
You're talking about a number of different issues that...
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we would back you up on that completely, because the reason the legal budget has been high the last couple of years, this year in particular, where we had to go to the reserve fund for it, we've had two 40B cases, and we had a protracted conservation commission proceeding before the DEP regarding the Henry's Building that just ended. Took a year to go through that process. So we've had a lot of environmental expense and a lot of 40B expense, and aviation is another big area that town council's working on. I mean, we just got notified that the Terminal E, which is the international terminal over at Logan, they've just come up with the environmental assessment on that. It's 1,100 pages. We're going to be filing a comment letter on that. It's due August 19th. So we're already spending money on town council in the past year or so on these comment letters, the objection on the 4L runway. So you're right, that it's, they are specialized areas. So I think our committee would probably agree with you on that one.
And we did look at, again, a number of communities. So it's, there was obviously a couple of communities that had in-house, they were larger, but they also still incurred substantial external costs. So it's not a case where we just kept looking, just at Milton, we looked at other communities and just said, just didn't seem to save any real money here, not given the uniqueness. And certainly, each town has a different level of litigation that's going on, a different level of requirements based upon its own uniqueness. So that's really a quick summary of what's going on with the town government study committee.
Good. That sounded good.
Two areas, Rick, that we've asked the committee to look at in recent years, and I don't know whether you have, and you've come to a resolution on it, and there's no change that you're recommending, or you haven't gone to it because you've had a lot on your plate. One was the composition of the capital committee, and the other one was the, I mean, I don't want to get all the independent boards all riled up, but looking at ways to consolidate, perhaps, operations. I know this is a big priority for Mr. Gordon, of perhaps the park department, the cemetery, the DPW, so that there could be some cross-training of workers or some, if during the winter season, perhaps the park staff might be redirected to another department. That sort of, thinking along those lines of looking at those departments and seeing if there's consolidation opportunities there. There may not be, but to at least explore it.
Can I add to that as well? I think that, you know, and your group has done a fabulous job with this experience in trying to find ways to be efficient and, you know, looking at a regionalized approach to things. And to piggyback off of Madam Chair, that, you know, there's a real opportunity to at least look at these things. I think that a lot of other towns that are comparable to us have gone through that, where they have like a human service branch and things. And I've actually worked in it and seen the benefit in how well the communication actually enhances the opportunity throughout the town. And I think that it's something I would like, you know, the group to take a good, hard look at, because, and again, like Madam Chair said, I don't want to get all the other boards up and, you know, you know, and wild about it, but, you know, realistically, you know, it's tough, money's tough to come by these days. And to really do a really good job, and now that we've gone with your support to a strong town administrator, to be more efficient, more productive, and to have communication kind of drive, you know, how business is done, is going to only help this town.
So this was human services, such as the Council on Aging and Health and organizations like that?
It would be, you know, creating, I mean, long-term, without getting too far out here, but being, you know, very obvious too, though, is a recreation department, okay? Where, I mean, I know firsthand, you know, affordable programming, you know, some people might think this is an affluent town, but it isn't, you know? It's a very diverse town, which makes it so great. If we could create affordable programming for seniors and youth from zero to 99 across the board, that would be an incredible luxury or cultural luxury for our town. And I think that, you know, when you do consolidate eventually, you know, in your work where you can train some of the workers to work, you know, with the fields and the plowing and all those different things, without getting into the weeds on it, I think you'll find more efficiencies, and you'll find that your residents who are taxpayers will see[1776.66] work where you can train some of the workers to work, you know, with the fields and the plowing and all those different things without getting into the weeds on it, I think you'll find more efficiencies and you'll find that your residents who are taxpayers will see greater benefit to living in the town. And I think that's just an example, but having the library meet with the Council on Aging and the Recreation, having all these groups coordinate, in a coordinated effort, talk to each other on a regular basis, I think you will get, residents will see more return, okay, on the taxes that they pay daily.
Let me add that to the list. Let me just respond on the two that Katie raised. The capital improvement, we have looked at that. Unlike the financial and some of these other ones, that has been pretty different in every town. So, where we are on that one is going back to the Department of Revenue and maybe the Maurice Donohue UMass Institute to say, hey, what do they have for any research they've done? Because it's, the composition of the capital improvement committees in other towns is not the same, the pattern is not the same. It's an interesting compositions in various places.
I know one thing we've talked about in the past at some of our joint meetings is just the notion that if you have a representative of the schools, the library, the selectmen, well, you really wind up as people advocating for their own departments. And should it be more like a warrant committee where this, I mean, it's a smaller committee than the warrant committee, but on that committee, you got 15 people appointed, not really to represent any one department, but just to look at the overall budget of the town. And would the Capitol Committee be better off with, whether it's just residents who are not currently serving in other committees or some other makeup? Perhaps you'd need some, you probably would need the accountant still involved, and there may need to be some town officials still involved, but either broaden it-
Ex officio, for example.
Perhaps, yes. But the idea of just getting people on the committee to bring a fresh perspective and not come in looking to just protect their own turf, that sort of thing. I mean-
See, I think the problem that, what you have to be careful of is the Capitol Committee is not looking at one year myopically. It's looking at a huge span of time. You don't want people coming on and going off that committee constantly. You want, you want to have a core group of people that, so you've got to be a little bit careful, I think, when you, when you figure out how that-
People who serve on the warrant committee often run for three to five years.
But the warrant committee, again, is looking at one year at a time.
Well, we want to move away from that, too, and get that looking more long-term, too.
But that's management. That's management looking at the five-year forecast.
But if you have a resident of the town who's coming in and willing to do three to four to five years on it, then they are looking over a period of years, and that five-year rolling capital plan would still be, would still be in place. And perhaps you would have, I just think it's something for the committee to look at, whether it's worth just elected officials and town employees on there, or should we have more of a independent look at the Capitol?
Again, we're going to go back to the Division of Local Services and see if they have, because as I said, there has, there is not a model that jumps out at you like a CFO model. There's not, you know, in some cases, things jump out that are pretty consistent across towns. This one is not consistent. So, we may be hoping that, again, the Division of Local Services may have some advice as to what they've seen or what best practices.
I know one of the better and well-respected ones is Arlington. I'm not sure exactly how they're configured, but, I mean, they certainly have their act together. I know that.
That would be worth looking at.
And the other one you asked about was the operations one, and we have looked at that. And we are not in favor at this time of consolidation of the DPW, the parks, and the cemetery. We believe that the services that are offered by the parks and cemetery would suffer if in fact it was merged with the DPW at this point. So, we don't believe that merging those at this time. So, we feel that there would be a degradation of services in terms of the parks and the cemetery, so-
That's interesting.
We're not, at this point, advancing that.
Have you looked at what other towns have done in that area?
There are other towns that have done that, but we just don't believe that the committee looked at this and has put it aside at this time.
I'd be curious to find out the reasons why, if that could be, if I could get those, because, you know, it's clear to me that other towns that were comparable have found enormous success. Matter of fact, we just hired a new Assistant Director in the DPW who oversaw the fields in the town of Norwood, which are excellent fields under John Carroll's leadership there, great town manager, and he happens to be a former Parks Commissioner. So, right there is an efficiency that I don't think that we'll be taking advantage of. But I totally respect the committee's, you know, thoughts and obviously, but I'd just be curious as to why. I'd like to see the pros and cons, that's all.
And we did actually meet with Tom several, a couple of years ago on this. We've actually, we looked at it twice, and so we've twice now deferred it. We just don't believe, at this point, we're not convinced that there'll be any service improvements or that amount of savings.
I'm just curious, have you looked at it in the, from the angle of the strong town administrator? Because one of the challenges, you know, we can talk about a five-member board, 10-member board, we can talk about other types of things that we can do for the strong town administrator, but if, and we're in the process of bringing somebody new in within the next few months, probably, whoever we bring in, they may be the greatest town administrator in another community, but because of the fragmentation of the roles here, the town administrator still is not going to have jurisdiction over a lot of departments that are under independent boards. And I think we've been thinking for a long time that that's, getting some of that fragmentation addressed is one of the bigger issues, far more, my view, far more important than however many people are serving on the Board of Selectmen, because that's the day-to-day administration of the town. That's the town administrator's role, and how much authority are they going to have, and how much, how much can they really get done when they're dealing with a lot of independent boards? So, I'm, I think from that angle alone, it might be worth considering.
Well, again, we have to, the committee needs to be convinced that this, frankly, the burials will be completed on a timely basis, on a very timely basis. There's nothing more important than a burial being completed on a timely basis. Committee has to be convinced that we are not going to realign, reallocate services elsewhere that are getting ready for a burial. Want to be sure that the fields are not ignored, because, for example, we have a late winter and there's an early spring that the ball fields need to be ready. So, we want to make sure that all the recreation programs are not suffering because there's been a change in priorities. And the committee at this point is not convinced that the services will be delivered across the board to the cemetery folks, people who have family being buried at the cemetery, or the recreation programs, and that children of the town will suffer from lack of preparation.
I clearly have the town to do it, and I think that's the role of good department heads and how you structure that, those departments, and what kind of deputy directors you have in the line of command. And I think it could easily be done, but-
I also just want to add, and I, again, I respect your opinion and your judgment, but I think that, I think that, you know, there's a greater, a greater need to, you know, and I think we've seen it with the finances, with aligning with the schools and the town, okay? Well, the same has to be said with the schools and the town on other things, okay? And I bring back recreation, I bring back cultural stuff, because, you know, as it stands right now, and I can tell you, it's a gray mark for this town. We don't have a permitting in place where, you know, I know how strapped the Parks Department is in terms of doing programming. We don't do one twentieth of the programming of other towns that are comparable to us. And that's not Dave Perdidos' fault or the Parks Commission's fault. It's because of the way the system is currently right now. And who suffers? Kids and seniors, okay? And I think that it's wrong that we don't look at that and see that the schools, where they have to then reach out, pay for fields at the schools. We don't have a shared kind of resource with a shared permitting. Everything should be one, and the towns that have been successful have done that, you know? And I think that that needs to be explored. I think that's the efficiencies, whether it's, the cemetery is separate, there are other departments that could have some success in consolidating, and I think that maybe you should look at that long-term.
One thing we should probably advise the Town Government Study Committee on is, an area that we're really focused on increasing and improving is in communication. So, we've now got a town Twitter account. We're going to be, it's not approved yet. We're still in draft, but we're going to be working on a social media policy. The town administrator's been doing a lot of work to get our department heads to be more proactive in putting out news and communicating, again, more proactively with residents. So, that's something that, we're going to be revamping the website, and one thing I wanted to mention to you is, one of the things on the website is, there's a lot of problems on the website, but this inconsistency among boards in terms of meeting minutes being on the website and agendas being posted. And so, if you, if the Town Government Study Committee could, I think it's, I don't know whether it's Barbara Martin or Emily Martin, whoever works with the minutes coming in, making sure we get them, with the IT folks getting them up on the website. But we really want to try to encourage all our boards and committees to have the minutes on the website as often as we can get them updated and as soon as we can get them updated, because occasionally, we get calls and, you know, what's going on with a certain board or where are the minutes? And it would be helpful if we could, right, you know, we've got some people who've got them up as of a couple of weeks ago, and we've got some people, committees that haven't had them up in a couple of years. So, I think that's just one area we'd like to try to harmonize across all the boards. So-
There is software out there that many, many towns are using. I think Westwood uses it. I showed it to Emery, that really does kind of bring in together all of the agendas, all, and either puts them in the cloud or you can host them separately, but it, huge accolades from the communities that use it.
Yeah, it's a shared resource where people, everybody can, can kind of view it and on multiple levels.
Yes.
Even to fields, to fields, to agenda notes, to everything, where everybody can see things in real time, so that they're really, it takes a lot of the question out and a lot of the guesswork and the finger pointing.
So, that's something we're working on, is increased communications, and as we have more on that, we're, we'll keep you updated on how we're doing with that.
That's great.
Yeah, but trying, yeah, trying to get the message out, trying to get a consistent message out, so.
Yes. Well, thank you to you and all of your work. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thanks for being patient. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay, Mr. Clark is here. I think he may be here to join us for the next item, Bill, letter regarding the East Milton Deck. Good night. Thank you.
Good to see you all.
Hey, Ted.
Good night.
Hi, Bill.
Good evening, Bill.
You're limping a bit, but getting around.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a, have it on letterhead?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So, we have a letter that's relating to the East Milton Deck project. Bill, would you like to introduce this for us?
The Mass Department of Transportation is ready to take and file an application with Federal Highway to address the 4F issue of the East Milton Deck. As we move this forward, one part that would be required is that the town sign off or the selectmen issue a letter of support for the application. A letter has been drafted. I started, Mr. Flynn finished. You have the copy of the letter before you. Do you want me to read the letter?
No, I don't think that's necessary, but I think we just need to-
It actually explains what the project is, explains why we would do it. It gave a timeline of how we got to where we are. It addresses the particular issues on the deck itself, what it's made up of, what it would become, and how we got there, and what our, our goal of getting to the finish line.
Okay, and I guess we should just, you may have already explained this, but it's a letter to, addressed to the Federal Highway Administration. It'll be attached to the Mass Department of Transportation, to Howard Stein Hudson's analysis that will go to the Mass Department of Transportation, and they will submit it to the Federal Highway Administration.
As part of that 4F package, yeah.
Yes.
Our letter, the selectman letter is an appendix to the Net Benefits Programmatic Section 4F evaluation.
Do we have any comments?
I'll propose a motion to approve and sign a letter to be submitted with the 4F evaluation to the Federal Highway.
Second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Bill.
All right. Plan as for this, your letter, once it's signed, will go to Howard Stein Hudson, who'll put the rest of the package together. They'll deliver it tomorrow morning to Mast dot, Mass Department of Transportation, and it is their expectation to deliver it to Federal Highway before the end of the week.
And we, we do get a lot of inquiries about the deck project, and we've said it so many times before, but we should just remind people, this is in the control of the state. The federal and state governments are funding this project.
This is state-
It's no longer a town project. It hasn't been for a while. It's a state project. So, you know, for the people who ask us the status on it, oftentimes, we have to say, we're working with the state, we're pushing the state as hard as we can to move this along.
We're guiding the state into what we would like to see happen in that area.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Is there any other item on the agenda that you were here for? Is that the only one?
I think so.
Okay, I think that was it. All right, next item is the 2016 state primary warrant.
I'll propose a motion to approve and sign the September 8, 2016 state primary election warrant.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town administrators report.
Yes, Madam Chair, as the Town Treasurer briefly alluded to earlier in his bond presentation, as a result of a conference call with Standard and Poor's on July 20th with our financial team, the town has again received a rating of AAA, and so that's, that's really exciting. Some of the reasons they cited that we are still a AAA community are our strong management, good financial policies and practices, our strong budgetary performance, very strong liquidity, strong institutional framework, and they are, they're very pleased with the way we run our town. And I would like to thank the financial team that was involved in the conference call, which was your Town Treasurer, your Town Accountant, your Chief Assessor, your Assistant Town Planner, and Unibank. So, that's exciting news.
That is very good news.
Going out with a AAA.
Congratulations to you when the-
When you know that the interest rates we just issued bonds had-
Exactly, yes. The other thing I just want to praise the board of is, I will be hosting a department head meeting tomorrow morning, and we will be introducing our media consultants to the department heads, as you spoke about a little earlier, Madam Chair, to kind of get them to embrace social media, that, you know, our website's only as good as the information we put on it. So, they're going to be working with department heads about the need to get the information out and get it out early, and, because times of the essence when you're educating the public on certain issues and projects. So, we'll be meeting with department heads tomorrow. They will also be working with our IT department on our website to try to make it more user-friendly for iPhones, iPads. So, this is exciting. I think it's important that the town, because we have such a limited staff here in the Selectmen's Office, you know, to get the information out, it was challenging for us. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to solve that problem if we are able to put it in our fiscal 18 budget, a position, communications position. But I'm excited to be able to bring these consultants on board on a small, limited trial basis in order to, again, get the town's message out there and get the right information out there.
Congratulations on doing that, Emery. I think that, I think every city in town now will see a benefit to doing so, and they're already doing it. I think that, that putting out accurate information is critical. I think engaging residents about how government can help them on a daily basis is even more important. I think that, I think this is going to be a real, a real powerful source for this, especially as we move forward and transition to a strong town administrator.
That's right.
I think that it's going to really help the town.
Okay.
I agree. Thank you.
And that's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, Chair's report. I just wanted to briefly update on the master plan implementation committee's meeting, which was last week. We spent most of the meeting talking about the, the landing, the WRF, the interested parties at the WRF and the Swift Hatch Shop project. The Chair of the Master Plan Committee is Cheryl Togayas. She was at our meeting two weeks ago and suggested we talk about this at the master plan meeting. We had two members of the crew, the Friends of the Milton Crew, come in and meet with us. We also had Mike Roberts in attendance. And at the same time, other members of the Friends of the Crew were meeting with the Park Commissioners. I have not yet had a chance to call the Chair of the Park Commissioners to follow up and see how their discussion went. But I did want to mention to our board, the Chair of our committee suggested, and everyone in the Master Plan Committee agreed, that it might make sense for the Master Plan Committee to be the facilitator of getting the interested parties to the table, running some of the meetings, inviting the stakeholders to the next Master Plan Committee meeting, which I believe is August 15th. We talked about then possibly doing a site walk, maybe even going out on the water in the boats, so that people could get familiar with the, with the area and explore it and continue the discussion that we've begun. But there are so many stakeholders involved. There had been talk about maybe getting a committee of stakeholders together. This, the sense of the Master Plan Committee was it's something that that committee would be interested in taking on, would be willing to do, and would see its role as a facilitator, not as the decision-maker, because obviously, that's an advisory committee.
That's not their role, yeah.
That's right. But, but their role, but it is, the development, redevelopment of the WRF and increasing public access to the WRF is a goal in the master plan. So, it, it's, as Cheryl Togayas said at our meeting, it's probably not the first thing that the Master Plan Committee would have focused on. In fact, at our meetings in the spring, when we got started, traffic was a big issue. when we got started, traffic was a big issue. And we've spent maybe another half hour talking about traffic and some of our low-hanging fruit goals. But the, the sense was that this is appropriate for the master plan, and it could be something that the master plan committee could, something tangible that that committee could start working on early. And knowing that, obviously, it's the selectmen and the park commissioners who would issue any RFP for the yacht club building, and that there are other stakeholders involved, the planning board would have to be a big part of any discussion on Roberts's redevelopment of his property. The park commissioners control the whole area, so they have a big role to play. So that was the sense, and I wanted to see what the consensus of our board was.
I would tend to agree. I think it is a, a master plan goal. So, yeah, I mean, it goes beyond what the selectmen could, could do. So, yeah, in terms of that vision and planning, I agree, yeah. Let them implement, you know, or let them advise.
At least facilitate getting the, so I think the idea, I did check in with Tim Zerwinski, and we haven't outreach to the other groups yet, but the plan is that, to do that and to invite them all to the master plans meeting in August and coordinate, it's going to be hard in August if you get everybody.
The real question is, is what's the vision for that whole area?
And I think that's what would have to come out of something like this, yes.
You're going to get, you're going to get to that. And I think that, that's a great start. I think that we all envision having an opportunity to grow that area, the wharf and the landing and, and the yacht club that's down there, and really, you know, allow a crew team to be out there and more people to access it, you know, because we're very fortunate to have it.
Right. Because really, the same kind of, kind of mushroomed, and it really started out, it's just, what do we do with the Swift Hat House? And then, as we started talking about that, then the crews started to come into it and other, other pieces started coming into it one at a time.
Although the expiration of the yacht club's lease kind of coincided with the Swift Hat Shop-
With it, yeah, yeah.
-getting a lot of interest in the community. So, so, so it sounds like we're all agreeable to letting the master plan committee take the lead on this. And, okay. And then, the only other thing I wanted to mention, it just, last night, there was a presentation, neighborhood, well, not really a neighborhood, it was just a public meeting held at the library on the Ice House project on Blue Hills Parkway. Ned Corcoran and his clients, the McKean family, were there, and they gave a presentation. There were a lot of questions. I attended it just because Ned had mentioned it at our last meeting. And one of the things that came up, and this is, this is just a suggestion or an idea at this point, is that an alternative to a town meeting warrant article for a bylaw change may be the concept of a friendly 40B, since there's now a residential component to it, or a local initiative project. That's something that he mentioned. I, since I was there, I asked him to expand on it, just explain to people what that process entailed. And obviously, that was something that would involve the Board of Selectmen, would be before the Board of Appeals, but there'd be a lengthy public process before that. There's no, there's no decision been made that that's even going to be formally requested of us, but it came up at the meeting, and I just wanted to mention that to the board, that that may be something that moves forward as a, as a potential. And it would still mean a lot of, it would give us a greater role in the process, but would mean a lot of public input, perhaps before this board, rather than the planning board, if it were to go that route. But again, it may not. It may just be a regular warrant article that goes forward, which is the, was the initial plan and has been, was the plan in February.
Mm-hmm.
So I, those, just wanted to report on those two meetings. Anyone, any reports?
I don't have one at this time.
No.
Okay. Citizen speak response?
We just had the one issue, and I think we pretty well addressed it. I, I hope we addressed it anyways.
Yeah, I think we did during the traffic report. I, Pat Greeley was in at our last meeting. He and I have been playing telephone tags since then to try to have a discussion, follow up on his issues about Curry.
I talked to Emery about that, too, in terms of-
Oh, okay.
Shekama.
Getting, yeah.
In terms of doing-
Bringing a lighting expert to have him go out and-
If we could just do a peer review of, you know, that could be somebody that we hire, let's look at it. Is that all they can do? You know, is there anything, talk about it?
So independent?
Independent review.
Interesting. All right. Yeah, Pat, just, his latest communication to me was he'd just like to schedule a time where we can sit down and go through the issues again. But if anyone's interested in taking the lead on that, I'm, you know, I'm happy to have someone else do it.
Yeah. Again, there's another thing, there's so many moving pieces, too, because we don't know how it, how it dovetails with Dover. And, and we've asked town council many times, and it's, it's kind of unclear, but, but certainly, there's been cases that have been lost in, with lighting in other communities that-
Well, and the planning board has the potential design review bylaw before them.
Right. Again, design review's not mandatory, but, you know, but at least it gets it out in the public before something happens, yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, unless any of you would prefer to have a meeting with him, I'm happy to set something up and try to talk with him about some of these issues.
I've, I've met with PF, and I share his concerns.
Yeah, I think we all have. We all know.
You know, I mean, so, I mean, if, if you'd like to meet with him, that's great. I've met with him, and Tom has, and I think we all share the concerns that he has.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll try to get a time for him to come in.
Madam Chair, could we take this time maybe for Mr. Hurley to tell the board about another idea that he has regarding the community meetings and share that with the rest of the board and get their thought on that?
Well, and you're talking about continuation of the one community meeting we had with the Central Ave.
Boardly community meetings, yes.
And to kind of turn that into, again, kind of in keeping with the communication and to just, you know, maybe do it once a quarter or, you know, so four times a year, just have a, basically a road show.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think that, you know-
You take the selectmen, you take the police chief, the DPW director, and any other interested, and you bring them out into the community and, and try and have a productive conversation.
At the end of the day, we might learn something that we didn't know, and we might be able to, to follow up on something that, that is really, you know, interested, well, that the residents are interested in. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea, just in terms of timing. Summer, obviously, is a bad time right now with a lot of vacations, but-
It is, yeah.
Even going into the fall, I think, given that, we're not sure the timing of the town administrator and where we're going to be in that process, is that something that, maybe we should think about waiting until we have a new, whether it's a new person in place or have some direction, a sense of where we're going on that before we schedule one of these, because there's an awful lot on the current town administrators' plate in terms of trying to finish up things, projects, and whatnot in the office before someone new comes into the role. It's important. I agree, it's a, it's a good thing to do. I'm just wondering, timing-wise, even if we were to schedule it for early fall, we have a lot on our plate right now, and we've got a town administrator who's in transition.
Yeah.
Maybe it's something we can start in the winter.
I'd say, some of them are easy things. Yeah, I mean, you never know what you're going to get. You're never going to know what kind of feedback you're going to get.
You know, maybe do one late fall before the winter, you know, and just have to start there.
And four times a year strategically put them in different parts of the town, so you get different-
Feedback from different, yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. All right. Is that under future agenda items? I think we've, anything else other than anything we've mentioned previously? We have some other items for August.
Yeah, I think we're going to talk about pilot.
Yes.
You know, the formation of a committee.
Can we put that on for August?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then I will move that we enter into executive session to approve executive session minutes, to discuss negotiating strategy with respect to non-union personnel, town administrator, and collective bargaining, Milton Public Employees Association Union, and to discuss strategy with regard to litigation, 711 Randolph Avenue, and real property, Zero Central Avenue, believing that having such discussions in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating or negotiating position of the board, and to return to open session for the purpose of adjourning.
Second.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So now we're in executive session.